Good morning. Want to call into session the June 14th, Wednesday, June 14th meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, a continuation of our budget hearings for the recommended budget for 2017-18. And I want to thank those who've joined us this morning. I know there were a number with us yesterday and we've still got some items to go over this morning, including our capital improvement program. Before we jump into the agenda, though, we'll have Flo call the role to establish a quorum for today's meeting and then also make some brief announcements and we'll get started.
Thanks.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, June 18th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff when the chair calls your name. Please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Okay, thanks. Well, Flo, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. With that, Mr. Gill, do you want to do any recap? I will note that we have the entire day set aside. I don't know that we're going to need that or even the entire morning, but we'll see how things go. That I intend to have a break at about 11:40. If we're not completed, come back at 1:00 at the end, if that's okay with my colleagues, in the event we don't get through this morning.
Unless we're finished by then.
Right, absolutely. Yep, if we're finished, everybody's free to go.
So basically, what we have for you this morning is a quick presentation on CIP.
Okay.
And after that, it's into deliberations on the budget. There's a couple of follow-up questions that we have information for you. And then it's then back to the board on passage. And then, once we got done with the budget, it's our consent item that we need approval.
Okay. All right, very good. And I would just note, too, that public hearing is still open, in the event that folks didn't get a chance to speak to any items that we heard yesterday, as well as those we're going to hear today. Certainly, we'll entertain speakers on any item on the budget and prior to our deliberations. And so I would just note that for those that are here and those that might arrive a little later on in the hearing. So, okay, with that, then, we'll start with our capital improvement program, item 11 from yesterday. And Kristin.
Good morning.
Good morning. Didn't call you back in yesterday afternoon.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy insisted that they not do that, so.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
You bet.
Good morning. Kristin Yates of the County Executive's Office. I first wanted to address a question that's come up in the office this morning regarding the Orangeville Library. There is currently $5 million budgeted for that project, and we are waiting a project from Supervisor Frost. When that's available, we can go ahead and get started on it. Okay? So in regards to the fiscal year 17-18 CIP, we have the following revisions in front of you this morning. Regional Parks, we've added two projects for the Mather Preserve. It's the Mather Wetland Preserve Fencing Project and the Mather Commerce Center Landscape Improvement Project. And in addition to that, for Project 28, we have added, in the unfunded section, a project summary table for that project as requested by the board. In the Transportation section, we have moved.
Excuse me, Kristin, Ms. Peters has a question.
The County Executive, did those two items that she just added at Mather get added to my list?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we did.
Okay, good, thanks.
The Transportation section, the movement of the Bradshaw Landing Project was moved from the completed canceled list to the unfunded tab under Transportation. So we don't lose track of that project as requested. For Waste Management and Recycling, we consolidated the Projects 1 through 3. So they are now Project Number 1 in the Waste Management and Recycling tab. The consolidated for, they were consolidated for the better representation of the need of the department for three axle collection trucks. In Technology, as a result of the board's approval of the June 6th item for the Voter Center model, we have moved their project from the unfunded section in Technology to Technologies Funded section, Project Number 6. And the CIP binders that you have before you and the information that is online represents that change. So our recommendations today are to accept the Planning Commission's resolution finding that the fiscal year 17-18 CIP is consistent with the county's general plan and to adopt the final fiscal year 17-18 five-year CIP. And our department directors and representatives are here in case you have projects that you have questions about. Okay?
Okay, good. Thanks, Kristin. So Supervisor Frost.
Hi, Kristin.
Hi.
I just wanted to clarify, confirm my understanding regarding the CIP that, because I have a couple of other projects that aren't quite ready to go on there, but when we're ready and we have a project, we can at any time during the year add that to the CIP.
So the process for the addition of a CIP project is that General Services brings that forward as an amendment to the CIP whenever you're ready to get started.
So if you'd notify us that you're ready with a project, let us know. We'll bring an amendment back to the board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Other board members have questions? If not, I just, as we have discussions about some of the plotted improvements and/or when RCCC, the item 4 that gets dropped and that comes back, there's about $120 million included in here in improvements. Some are renovations, some are roofs and so forth and so on. I think just as we had that cumulative discussion, kind of the point I made yesterday, we ought to at least have that as backdrop. I mean, there are in the CIP, there are projects that have been identified, going through the proper process and so forth, but I think it would be important to have that as a point of reference, too, because as we have some discussions about what we might do going forward. Thanks. Anything else on the CIP? I have no one sign up on the CIP. Mr. Gill, anything else you wanted to add?
That's it.
Mr. Ferguson, anything? Okay. All right, then, there's nothing further on that. We'll hold that to our resolutions here in a moment, but that will take care of the capital improvement program. Thank you, Kristin.
Can we go ahead and approve the CIP now to conclude this item so that we get the appropriate recusals in order?
Okay. I would move to adopt staff recommendation, number 1. Number 2, adopting final fiscal year 2017-18 five-year capital improvement plan, except for the following items, which will come up on the screen.
Perfect.
Need a second to the motion.
Okay. Second. Or Mr. Kennedy, a second, okay? All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, then we need to move the balance of the items. Chair, move the balance of the items.
Move the balance.
Chair, a second. All right, move a second then to approve the balance of the CIP. As noted in the previous motion, those excluded with a recusal by Ms. Peters. Okay, please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Thank you, Supervisors.
Okay, good, thanks, Kristin. Okay. Then we'll, Mr. Gill?
So, next phase is deliberation. Before we get into it, you have some specific questions that you asked us, and I think the clerk has our written comments back, and Britt, if you can walk supervisors through that.
Metro Cable, you can take the screen down.
Good morning. Excuse me, good morning, board members. So, we identified, or we heard you ask six questions, or identify six issues you wanted some information on at these hearings. There were some other issues that you identified for future consideration, coming back later in the year, but these were the six that you asked for responses at these hearings. The first question was a question related to the upgrade of the vehicles requested as a growth request by the probation department. As I indicated at the time, the money to replace the existing vehicles without an upgrade is already in the light fleet budget because it's accumulated over the years through rental payments. But you wanted to break out of what the difference was between the cost of the replacement at the current type of vehicle, which is a Impala sedan versus an SUV. This outlines that. It shows that the net additional cost is $11,469 per vehicle, base purchase price, and outfitting is, the difference is about a $9, $9,500 difference, $28,000 versus $38,000 roughly. And then, with a more expensive vehicle, then the annual rental rate, which covers maintenance and replacement in the long term, is higher. So that accounts for the additional $1,500.
Okay. And all vehicles in the probation department are now going to go to this different platform, so they'll all reflect this in the replacement costs, right?
You mean going into the future?
Going in the future, yeah.
I can't say all, but I think this is the standard vehicle that they would like to use for all of their probation officers in the field. They may have other vehicles.
That's what I understood from Chief Seal, was pretty much this is going to be the standard vehicle. Is that correct?
We would like.
Oh, yeah, come down, I'm sorry, Lee.
Yeah.
Thank you, Supervisors. At this time, we're seeking to upgrade 11 vehicles, so that's all we're asking for. Certainly, it would be our hope to follow this into the future. But part of what we want to do is upgrade these vehicles. It's a standard law enforcement. Most of our officers are very familiar with the Ford Explorer, so we think that it'll be a very suitable, appropriate car. It's consistent with what we see with Rangers and Sheriff's deputies and other law enforcement. That said, I think it makes sense to do it incrementally and.
And migrate to this platform as you do replacement vehicles. That was my point, so that's why you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good, good. Thanks, Lee.
Second question was what percentage of both the all funds and general fund budget were essentially personnel costs? And you can see that salary benefits constitute 39.9% of the all funds budget and 49.3% of the general fund budget. Then, another question had to do with major revenue changes in the enterprise and special revenue funds. And there's a table in the handout that you have before you that basically shows that there's a total increase in revenue of $65.9 million or 5.1% in revenue in the special revenue and enterprise funds. And then there's an outline of what those are. I don't know that you really want me to go through that this morning, but you can read that at your leisure, and that does sort of describe the major changes. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer those questions. And then, the fourth question had to do with the CalFresh administrative allocation, particularly the reduction in state administrative allocation that we had included in the budget, and as Ms. Edwards indicated, we now think is actually going to potentially be higher than that. And specifically with regard to the reduction of $300,000 in funding for outreach. The report lays out how much we get, 30 million generally this year for the state administrative allocation, the $1 million reduction that's in the budget, and then what we think may turn out to be a $5 million reduction, although we're not entirely certain based on the May revise. Most of the money that we get in the administrative allocation goes to fund eligibility specialists, and that's, because that's really what we do, we're really a subcontractor for the state. The state gets federal money, they subcontract with us, they put some of their money in subcontract with us to provide eligibility for the federal food stamps program. And you can see that that's where most of the money, most of the reduction is going to be covered by currently holding positions vacant, shifting the work of those positions from CalFresh to other eligibility programs that are receiving additional funding. And then we had initially recommended the $300,000 reduction in outreach. After looking at this more in depth, we've changed our recommendation, and we are now not recommending reduction in the outreach program. We think that it's a very, very minimal investment for a significant benefit, and the offset would be, if we need to, and we're not recommending this now, but if we need to, we would simply hold vacant and/or eliminate about 1.5 FDE additional eligibility specialists. The outreach program targets a very specific populations that have, you know, significant needs in terms of assistance in eligibility issues. The fifth question was just what's the cost of the weather respite shelter program, not the winter shelter program, the weather respite shelter program for the homeless in 16-17? And there's an attachment, you can see that cost was $115,000, and that is not included in the 17-18 recommended budget. And then, you had asked us to cost out the Clean and Safe Parkway's initiative that Supervisor Serna had proposed, and you can see there's a spreadsheet attached, prepared by the Department of Regional Parks that does that. And it takes the positions that Supervisor Serna proposed and then adds in other costs that would be necessary in order to actually operate, such as vehicles and other costs, and comes up with a cost estimate of about $3.8 million a year.
Nice, sir. Yes, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Britt. This is good work, and I appreciate the level of detail here. Again, this only acknowledges generally the staff positions that I outlined in the spreadsheet I presented yesterday. Again, it probably does not include the possibility of having a community prosecutor or community prosecutors assigned. It does not include the possibility of having additional social service workers. Okay, all right, just want to make sure what I'm looking at. Thank you.
Okay. Right before you leave, I did have a couple of follow-ons here, just, and I appreciate the report back as well. Back to the special funds, then, I guess in response to question 2, so you're showing in red, you're showing reduction?
Reductions in revenue to those funds. And so, for example, in the airport, they had, they had a number of capital projects that were funded with federal grants. Capital projects ended in 16-17, federal grant revenue went down, and that, and there's offsetting increases and decreases. They've got new revenue or changes in revenue related to the agreements that they have now with the airlines. So that, the net result of that all is a negative, is a reduction in revenue. And, you know, so there's offsetting increases and decreases in all these different funds.
Okay. So solid waste, it shows a $3.5 million increase because we're showing increased tonnage coming to Tekefer landfill.
Yes.
That's available in the enterprise for qualifying efforts, right? Whatever that is.
Or whatever, whatever would be, you know, appropriate use of those funds.
Okay. And then transportation, reduction shown there, and one of the things that was notable, and we certainly are aware of what fund potential may be there in years to come, depending upon, obviously, how SB 1 plays itself out. But for the purposes of this year, this construction season, as I understand, we don't have any major paving contracts, and yet we've come through one of the more difficult winters in recent memory. Is there any thought about the ability to do anything more? I know you're putting, recommending, again, the $1.4 million general fund, again, which split between five districts, you know, gets a little more than $200,000 per district, that, is there any opportunity this season to capture this season, the, you know, what's, you know, what might be, allow us to do some work? And again, I know we had some other things we had to fill there, so.
Yeah. I believe so, but I saw Mike walk.
I know, Mike was in the middle of something out there, and we could, you know, if he'd still.
Mike's right here.
And before Mr. Penrose speaks, let me just make sure that the board understands that that transportation category includes a whole variety of different funds, not just the road fund and the transportation fund. The primary reduction is actually in the transportation sales tax fund, which is related to very specific projects that were funded out of that fund. And the roads fund and transportation fund actually have a slight increase in, have an increase in revenue because of the extra money coming from SB 1.
Yeah, but, well, we're not going to see that, though, until, you know, only in part, before the end of the fiscal year. And I guess my question is, Mike, and again, I know, as I said, you caught part of it, that we don't have any major paving projects prepared for this year, bless you, because we didn't have sufficient funding to build those contracts. We're going to put a million and four from general fund in there. Is there the ability, either recognizing those dollars, we'll be coming forward to get things done this construction season, recognizing the winter damage that's occurred and so forth, and so there's a way, recognizing advance, and, you know, we talked about this yesterday, about how we, you know, interfund transfers, but knowing that money's going to be certain, is there the ability to capture some this season to do some of the work that's, you know, again, a big backlog? And I guess that's my question, is there ability internally to do some of that outside of transportation, working with certainly Nav and Britt, to allow us to advance some of that roadwork that we know it'll just be that much worse next year if we don't get to some of that this year, so.
So Supervisor Natoli, in the context of the general fund contribution that's identified for this budget, I think that's where this discussion probably started. Sorry, I was outside.
Okay.
That, the million and four that's been identified has been actually placed into our programs. It has not been placed in as individual standalone projects.
Okay.
And as such, it will be expended, begin to be expended in this season. We have a number of locations that we're going to be doing larger repair work that's done with our force account, and that's what I mean, it's in the programs, that we'll be doing throughout the county through this season. So there will be some expenditure of those revenues in this season.
Yeah, I guess my question went more broadly than that. I think, Nav, you understand what I mean. Is there the ability to bridge over so we can do some more work this season?
Borrow the money?
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, exactly, interfund transfers or whatever.
I'll answer the second question then, sorry. I just wanted to take it piece by piece, because we have been pretty deliberate about where that money was applied in this particular budget.
Right.
So the identified revenues that we have coming into DOT this year of about $6.5 million is what we've identified in our budget, and Britt probably talked about that, essentially just fulfills our reductions that we had coming into next year. So it, again, will fund our basic programs. It doesn't, it's not going to be funding an expansion of road projects.
So we're a net zero.
Essentially, a net zero. So now, just so you know, though, we ultimately don't believe we're going to be at a net zero. We think that throughout this year, we're going to receive a little bit more than the $6.5 million that we've identified, and I think that was carried forward in the budget document that said we could receive as much as about 8.8 in this year. So what we would be doing relative to the SB 1 funds is that we anticipate bringing that back in September with a schedule of expenditures that we would be using those funds for, because that's, it's another layer of complexity that we have to do.
Right, but we missed most of this season. Again, my point is, is that we're coming upon the summer season, and so if there's the ability to do some work now, September, maybe that may be great to make the budget adjustment, but then it's too late to do much work for this calendar year.
That's understood, that's correct.
And so that would be, I guess, a question I would pose here for us, if that's what's anticipated, even if you had half of that, if you took another million, that'd buy you some activity somewhere, or some street, some, you know, some roadway in this county. It just seems to me that, practically speaking, you know, we have enough flux in any given year that if we could advance some of that work, and we, I trust we'll get some FEMA reimbursement.
Yes, we don't know the exact time.
At some point in time, again, we don't know what that's going to be and when that's going to come through, and, you know, I wouldn't hold my breath waiting for this season, but, so, to the point that we all know, you know, throughout the county and the unincorporated area, and so I guess, you know, maybe.
We have that. If that's what we need in transportation, we can work with Mike to make sure the money's available for him.
So maybe for the $2 million, the $2 million or a portion of that? Because he was talking about the difference between 6.1 and 8.
6.5, and we may see as much as 8.8.
8.8, so.
I thought most of that $8 million was going to salaries.
Well, that's what I said, that the $6.5 million is plugged into it.
Yeah.
Is going right into the base program, yeah. So it's the incremental difference that we might have available to do projects.
Have we already let contracts for these, this $2 million, or we?
No, we have not.
No, we haven't.
No, I know, but, I mean, do we have time to do that?
Well, it depends, again, if you do force account or if we do contracts. If we try and do contracts at this time, we won't make it. But we can do force account, which is what I mentioned earlier about program.
Right, and you can do repair work in neighborhoods and business districts.
So if the request is to see what we can do to advance some additional work on the come, for the money that's going to be coming a little bit later in the year, we can identify that and actually accomplish some level of that before we get into the winter months. And it's primarily going to be force account work.
And whatever we need, we can come back to the board and get the appropriate appropriation that we need.
Yeah, I think you ought to do that.
Yeah. Any other thoughts about it? Again, we all got, you know, there's, you know, throughout the county, there's plenty of work to do, so you'll.
Certainly is.
And again, you can then ramp up and get it done during the warm season, so. Okay, so, does that fit with, you okay, Mr. Ferguson? I did just want to add one other question, then. So on the respite shelter program, would that be something, again, you didn't budget that, and I appreciate the response on that, is that something when you come back with winter sanctuary, we could revisit in the event that we wanted to look at that, obviously after, you know, or at least in the September timeframe?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Okay, good, thanks. And so on the road piece, you'll be looking at $2 million?
Come back, whatever the amount is, we'll come back as contracts are coming.
All right, very good. Okay. All right. Then go back to our sub-agenda. We completed all the departmental reports. Oh, there was a request that came through from the district attorneys on the human trafficking, we kind of had some reference to at the end of it. What was the cost of that position? Maybe you can look that up. Because it was unfunded, that was the, the point.
Supervisor Natoli, the request for the criminal investigator and vehicle related to human trafficking was a total of $108,440, net county cost of $67,807.
Okay.
I'm sorry, a total of $176,247, federal revenue of $108,000, federal grant revenue, and net county cost of $87,000, or $67,807.
Okay, so $6,867.
Yeah.
Net county cost, that would be the amount?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, we can come back to that later. All right, I have Ms. Peters.
Chair, sorry for the late chime in here. Is Ann Edwards here? Yeah. Can I ask Ann to come to the podium?
Yeah.
I have a question about the response back on the weather respite shelter programs.
Good morning.
Good morning. Ann, thanks again for certainly all your help and your staff's help during the last few months when it was cold and wet outside, for helping us establish the centers that we did at Stanford Settlement and also at the site on North A. I guess, I'm reading through some of the bullet points about the challenges, difficulties, whether it be the fact that, you know, folks were not availing themselves of help because of the same issues that we're hopefully addressing with our full-service shelter. I guess my general question is, is if we were to institutionalize something so that we're maybe better prepared, if it's the will of the board, to do this for next winter, what would we generally think about doing differently?
Well, we would need to have some sort of capacity for pets, excuse me, and possessions. I think that was probably the biggest barrier, is people would show up and have, you know, the shopping cart full of things and/or a pet, and we just could not accommodate that at either location.
And I would assume that in many instances, the amount of items that people had was clunky, it was, you know, hard to, it would be difficult to kind of monitor or keep safe?
Well, yes, that is true. And also for the Stanford Settlement site, there was the issue of transporting the things in the van or the bus that used to transport the people. There was just no space either.
And then finally, the, you have the tables here with the program costs broken down. The cost per person per night is, seems like it's pretty high, at least in my estimation in terms of the cost components that go into that figure. What, how would we, how would we bring that down? What would be the best way to bring that down in terms of the, for instance, the security costs? Is there a better way to streamline background checks to pre-screen, 290 registrants? I mean, is there a different way to do that that would really minimize that cost?
The, one of the issues was we were doing it late in the day, and so it sometimes incurred overtime around doing the background checks. Winter Sanctuary doesn't do background checks at all, and that would be, and they haven't had issues, and that would be one way of saving a fair amount of money. I do think it's important to have security on site, and we do use contracted security, so that's probably the most cost-efficient way to go.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other general questions? We do have a couple of speakers, and anyone else wishes to address it, and then we'll come back to board discussion, deliberation, and any other questions that may arise. So I have Andy Hernandez, Andy, and if anyone else is here to speak, please feel free to come forward and fill out a form. Good morning, Andy.
Thank you very much, Supervisors, for this opportunity. I wanted to come up to support the regional parks clean and safe parkway initiative being proposed by Supervisor Serna. I think it's, as I pointed out in my email I sent last night, I think it's kind of, it's a long time coming, it's gotten worse and worse. It's, I mean, this is just the tip of the iceberg, it's terrible. I mean, you've probably heard a lot about the animal attacks of late, you know, people, bikers have been attacked and things like that, there've been a lot of, a lot of instances reported on that in the newspaper and whatnot. It just, it needs to happen. When I look through this, this is kind of the bare minimum, you know, in my opinion, to even begin, you know, to get a handle on this. So I urge you to support this in its current form, thank you.
Andy, could I ask you a question? First of all, thank you for being here, I know you're, you've stepped away from your business to be here to express your interest in this. One of the issues that came up yesterday, and I understand it, and kind of want your thoughts about it, which is this idea that if we substantially enhance the no camping ban enforcement in the parkway, almost regardless of which stretch, that the problem gets squeezed into nearby neighborhoods. Now, you're a Woodlake resident, but you're also, you know, I know you pretty well, you're a avid parkway user, I think it's clear that you would like to be able to use the parkway more often with your family and feel safe.
To that end, actually, my wife is riding down today, and I ask her to text me when she gets here to make sure she makes it okay with, so.
But my question is, is because you live in a neighborhood that's immediately adjacent or pretty close to the parkway, what are your thoughts about how we, you know, do we not enhance enforcement because there's the prospect of it getting squeezed out? And you're a city resident, you're not in the unincorporated county, but I, you know, do you have any thoughts about that, any hesitation that we shouldn't move forward with this because of that?
I have none, actually, and I think part of the reason is that when, when the problem is actually shoved into the parkway, I think it's kind of out of sight and out of mind. I think the more people are kind of in all neighborhoods, I think people will probably be more supportive of some of the efforts that both you and the city are proposing to actually bring help. And that, you know, and that help does cost money, and it's going to take a lot of meetings like this and a lot of proposals to make that happen, and I feel like when people can't see the problem, if it's, if it's the few people who walk the parkway and the bike riders and, you know, the occasional fire that everybody sees, it's just kind of out of sight, out of mind, it's swept under the rug, if you will. So I think that the truth is, it should be, the no camping ordinance should be enforced everywhere, city, county, and when somebody can be offered help, they should be. And if they can't take that, if they can't or won't take that help, then they'll just have to move along, this is short and the long of it.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Mr. Hernandez, are you aware of the changes in the homeless programs that are being proposed today and the changes in the parkway budget that are being proposed today?
I think that's a, I think the changes in the homeless programs is a great idea as well.
Yeah, well, the problem is, when you start squeezing people into the neighborhoods, I mean, they're already there, but it just puts-
We see them every day.
More and more of them there, and, you know, I have people, I mean, I know you live in Woodlake, and I represent Arden Arcade and Carmichael and Fair Oaks, and I get constant calls about people's houses being broken into, being confronted on the street, the trash in the shopping centers and the parks, or the creeks and in businesses. So I just don't agree with you that you think we should squeeze all of the homeless out into the neighborhoods so everyone will be aware.
Well, I think, I think the point is, they will still be in the parkway, and they will be in the neighborhoods, and they will be in the cities. I just think there isn't, we shouldn't have a solution that puts them all in one spot.
They're not all in one spot, so I guess we'll just have to agree to disagree on that strongly.
Okay. And also, just to point out, I am, I am in Supervisor Natoli's district as well for my business, and we see it there too, you know, not nearly to the degree, when I ride that parkway, it's a very different parkway once you get past Watt Avenue. It is a very different parkway.
I'm totally aware, I use the parkway all the time.
Okay.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Andy. Okay, and Andy, and Margaret Matthews, and they, okay, no, okay, all right. And anyone else then wish to address the board on any item on the budget, otherwise we'll bring it back to the board for discussion, deliberation, direction, and action, so. Okay, with that then, concludes the speakers this morning, and we'll bring it back to the board for some discussion, ideas, thoughts about changes, proposals, and then, you're going to do all the consents following the budget option?
Correct.
Anything else you want to advise before we jump in the middle of all this?
No, I think you have the information you need, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you, and thanks to our staff. Okay, with that, members of the board, we've got some reports back, we have some items for consideration, some of the items were addressed, and obviously there's a couple of big items that are outstanding for our consideration, so, someone want to jump in?
Mr. Chair, do you want to take these in a particular order by department?
Yeah, we could, we could do that, maybe we can walk down through just the departments where there were any changes, per the sub agenda we used yesterday, just, let's just do that. So Sheriff's Department, there was no disagreed items, and then District Attorney is the next. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy, okay.
So I didn't bring this up yesterday while the sheriff was here, because I didn't want to elevate it beyond where it should be, but I had to voice my concern over something that, in the big picture, I know is a very small thing, so I'm not going to take a lot of everybody's time, but I do think that it needs to be said. There's a line item for growth in the Sheriff's Department, that's $82,140 for a car for the undersheriff, and I just find that insultingly excessive, that, especially if you look at the next line item of growth request, it's for three cars for sheriff's deputies who are there, you know, on a daily basis, armed, you know, patrolling school districts in Elk Grove Unified School District, their schools. We have three cars for them that come out to about $61,000 each. So we have deputies patrolling and protecting kids, and we're buying cars for $61,000, and we have an undersheriff who's essentially an executive, and I don't have any problem with the undersheriff having a car, he's on 24 hours and all that, but even our own county executive has a auto allowance of $6,000 a year. You know, I just find it offensive to pay $82,140 for a car for an executive to drive home and go to work, and I'm not belittling the duties of the undersheriff, it's just an $82,000, I can't look my constituents in the eye and say that we gave an executive an $82,000 car. And I know that there's, it's loaded with law enforcement equipment, and there's depreciation in there, and there's also, I believe, $5,000 worth of gas. I just, again, I'm making a lot out of a little bit of money in the big picture, but it's real money, and I know it comes from Tucker funds, but the Tucker funds can be used on, well, other vehicles that are needed within the Sheriff's Department that are probably more cost-effective. So I can't support that particular line item.
Could somebody respond to that? The Tucker funds, I noticed that we also are calling out two, you know, Showtime Camaros for the youth services vehicles, and those are less, that's the cost for the vehicle for the second-in-command in the Sheriff's Department.
By the way, it's 26% less for the deputies' vehicles that we're looking at purchasing than it is for the undersheriff's vehicle.
So if the question is, what can Tucker funds be used for?
No, that wasn't my question.
I'm not sure.
That wasn't my question at all.
Stepping around that one, Brett.
Mr. Frost, you remember, that was my question last week.
Well, if the question is, why does the sheriffs, why does the car for the undersheriff cost more than the car for deputies? It's obviously a different type of vehicle.
My point exactly.
The vehicle that is being requested by the sheriff or undersheriff is exactly the same package that is provided to the sheriff, it's the same type of vehicle. Part of their argument is that they use these vehicles not just for personal transportation, but when they have visiting dignitaries and others and-
And I'm sure that happens a lot. You know, it might be more feasible to get a $61,000 car and a contract with a limousine company.
Understood.
Okay.
So when we do the review, because we, you know, the home retention vehicles are still under control of the, just as the positions are by this, by the board supervisor, we still approve the designation of home retention vehicles for all employees, whether they be elected or otherwise, is that true? Do we not, we, I thought-
I need to, my memory's a little bit not sharp on this, I think I know for everybody else except elected officials.
Okay.
But we are due for another review this fall, we'll put this in the mix to look at.
Well, yeah, maybe it'll be put into the review before we do the purchase.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, Supervisor Frost?
Is the, it says that he is waiving his monthly auto allowance, so how does that net out? Or does it?
It does not, I mean, the auto allowance, I believe, it's, no, it's not 600, it's 450? 450 a month, so the car value's much more than the auto allowance. And the conversation we'll have with the sheriff's office is that is this the appropriate type of vehicle to have, or is there a cheaper solution? It's a towel, it's what they use, so we can, we'll have that discussion with them.
Okay. All right, any other questions on that item? Okay, that's fine, that's good, that's, those are, okay, any other items then, so, of general nature, then we'll go back to our sub agenda yesterday, and we'll just start from the top then.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
While Supervisor Kennedy was speaking, I took the liberty of passing out the most recent correspondence we've received via email from constituents in various districts about their concern for the parkway. There is one in particular from Ms. Lee Rutledge, she asked that the email be read into the record, so obviously at the chair's discretion how you want to handle that.
Yeah, do you want to do that now, or you want to wait till we get to the parks?
I just wanted to bring it to your attention and defer to you, we can save it for the parks discussion.
Yeah, we're going to get there pretty quickly, so we'll have you read that into the record if you so desire, or we can have the clerk read it, or I can read it into the record. We'll come right back to that, and thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Okay, so District Attorney's budget, I guess I would just, deposition on the human trafficking, which I guess we get a grant of about, not quite two-thirds of the money to cover that, 108,000. I would be interested to see if we could fund that as part of our discussion here, so. I'll just put that out on the table. Anything else on the District Attorney's office?
She was asking for another hundred? I didn't hear that.
Yeah, it was 67,000. For number two, the one criminal investigator in vehicle, human trafficking grant, net county cost of 67,000, and that's matched by 108,000 and some change, federal grant, is that right, Brett?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I'd be willing to entertain-
Where does that, where does it come from when you add to it then? This is not already in the budget, so where do you take that from? When you add things like that?
Ms. Elliott, you can provide, if you want to come forward, and I'll certainly, the question was posed to Brett or to now, so go, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I mean, Sue's going to tell us first.
Okay, come forward, tell us who you are.
I apologize.
Okay.
Sue Elliott, on behalf of the DA's office, none of the items that were presented yesterday under growth have been recommended.
Right.
So those are all unfunded.
That was, that was the question, she wanted to know where the money would come from if we were to fund it, so that was the question.
It's a growth request that is recommended by our CEO.
Right.
All right, I'm asking the CEO.
But it's not recommended for funding?
It's not recommended, 67,000 is not in the budget at this point, and at the end, if this is a, if the board wants to add this, we will look at either our contingency or some other line item to true this up, and then true everything up in September.
Okay, because you'll look at fund balances at the end of the year, and 67,000 is significant money, but it's not-
I was hoping Ms. Elliott was going to say that we're going to absorb this cost.
Oh, you thought?
I think they could, if they, if, please come back to the microphone.
So if you, so if we can do that, if they can do that, then we could authorize the position then, so.
Yeah.
Get your exercise this morning, Sue.
I am.
You might want to sit closer next time.
Yeah, I think I will, you're right.
How many budgets is this for you, about 25 or 30?
We could find a way to absorb the 67,000 for the human trafficking position, as well as for the office assistant positions.
Okay, if, as long as we offer, if we authorize them?
The temp help, yes, yes, we could, we could absorb the $67,000 for the positions for the human trafficking, and then also for the office assistant.
All three?
All three, because we were going to offset with the temp help for the office assistant positions-
Yes.
With the reduction in our temp help budget.
Okay.
So you're asking the board to authorize the positions, not the money?
Correct. So it will be, so it's three positions, the office?
Three, four, five, six positions.
Right, we were going to take a, right, we were going to take an executive legal secretary.
No, no, I get that, it's one criminal investigator and three office?
Assistants.
Three offices, so it's a plus up of four positions.
Right, not the last two, not the investigative assistants, yeah, okay.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes total sense now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we'll note that then for the budget resolution, that assuming there's agreement that we would authorize the three office assistants and the one criminal investigator vehicle to be funded by, I guess, in the department, is that right, or whatever?
That's correct, and then we'll recognize the revenue coming in, so we'll true the budget up.
Right, so we get the grant revenue coming in, so, all right. Okay, then moving down our list, it was, my sub agenda, was it the homeless DHA, was that the next category?
Correct.
Okay. On that, any DHA items outstanding? And one thing I would ask, and I know you noted it, that before we go forward with issuing vouchers, at least in the degree we do during the winter season, that we have some report back on status of those properties or entities that we're doing business with and the condition of those lodging facilities, so, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if this is the right time to mention or not, or with the parks, but you heard my line of questioning earlier from Brandon Edwards. I think, quite frankly, we are going to continue to face kind of the winter respite center issue each winter, and it's been treated to date in somewhat ad hoc manner. What I would like to suggest, and it relates to my proposal when we get to parks, is that we consider what staff has outlined in terms of how to kind of comprehensively deal with our parkway challenge, given the skeletal framework I provided yesterday, but from that, along with that outline of staff for a particular objective to keep the parkways clean and safe, I think we need to consider some, and I would call it almost nominal amount for, that we keep set aside for respite centers in the winter. I don't know what that amount is, whether it's 100,000, 50,000, something that we could use as a match challenge for other private contributions like we did this past year, but I suspect that we may find ourselves kind of continually going back to the CEO's office, or working with Cindy or others, when and if that, that continues to present itself each time we have inclement weather, and we have overflowing shelters and waiting lists. So I don't know whether we want to think about that now, or with the parks discussion.
Okay, I just would note that I'd asked Mr. Gill earlier that when we came back in the September budget, as we look at winter sanctuary, that we also have this discussion about the weather respite centers, maybe not in the same context as Mr. Serna's framed it, but certainly to have us take a look at that, because I guess part of the continuum, at least during that heavy inclement weather period, so Supervisor Frost, you had a question or comment on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to, because it was, it was a real effort this last winter, but my question is, did the county already invest in some of the winter shelter activities? I know we did through Hart in Citrus Heights, and Steps Forward was involved in all those meetings, and-
The county does do it. Mr. Lake, can you give us a detail? The county does do it. Mr. Lake, can you give us the details on that?
We invest in vouchers through the winter. We invest in the winter sanctuary program. We provide funding to Sacramento State Department to process that. And we also have winter shelter contracts for some of our emergency shelters. And we invest, I believe it's $425,000 a year in those winter shelter slash sanctuary activities.
So did the homeless initiative add to that?
Well, we do.
The four homeless initiatives?
Those four homeless initiatives would be in addition to maintaining those winter operations.
So through this budget, we are adding to winter shelter activities?
Well, we, those initiatives would provide services through the winter, yes. Is that your?
What we don't have is, I think the essence of what we're going to look in September, what happened this year was that Supervisor Serna and some of the private folks raised some money and identified a site. So then, once the site got identified, was the security and some of the services we provide above and beyond winter sanctuary is what we provided at that point. And what Supervisor Serna's pointing out is that when that happens, you guys come to the county exec's office, or you go to DHA, and we absorb it somehow in our budget. And we had to bring a budget adjustment about two weeks ago to true our budget up. So the question I understand is in September, when we're finalizing our budget, do we want to set up, set aside additional money for, if that kind of activity happens, we have the money identified for it?
You mean for another, besides Serna Village?
Yes. Will be.
Because we, this budget did set aside 100,000 for Serna Village?
That's something completely different.
Or is that different?
Yeah, these are the respite, you know, when the weather got below a certain temperature, or you had heavy rains or whatever, that in addition to winter sanctuary into the other beds that are out there that are either funded through county support or otherwise, it's added kind of that additional ramp up during those, well, you helped with.
Well, yeah, but our activities were through Hart and through the homeless programs, and then the faith-based community stepped up in a huge way.
So we do.
So there was, we didn't come to the county for funding, did we?
No.
Or did we?
Citrus sites did not. This was a situation that there's been, over the years, that additional sites get identified. And then that's.
Permanent? Are these?
No, no, just temporary.
Like churches?
Could be churches, I think. Supervisor Serna, where was the last one?
We used Stanford Settlement.
Stanford Settlement.
And we used one of our county office buildings there, our North A campus.
And just so I can, let me see if I can.
I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can help you.
Make sure I understand.
So we've got winter sanctuary, which is a program the city and the county participate. That's with the participating places of worship. Then we had what was really an ad hoc effort with the leadership of the mayor. And then I tried to step in to flank that effort, quite frankly, in, in the municipal part of the district I represent, with the two respite centers. Went out, did some private fundraising. Originally, I came to the CEO to ask for a $25,000 contribution or match to the private funds that were being raised. The mayor did the same relative to the City of Sacramento budget, but it was all a scramble. It was kind of changed. It was very fluid, changed day to day. And what I'm suggesting is that it might be wise to set aside some funding so that we don't have kind of the clumsy effort. And I don't mean that in a derogatory way. It was clumsy on my part, too. But, but I think we can, there's a better way to do it. And so I think setting aside some resources to have it in place, to make it a little more seamless is what I'm suggesting.
So my question then is, is our homeless initiatives setting aside, I thought we were, that's what this whole six and a half million dollar homeless initiatives was, to help homeless initiatives?
What I would see as the difference is, when we get the Rapid Rehousing Shelter operative, we're going to be targeting a certain group of people based on them being high-end users.
Not winter shelter.
Whereas the winter shelter program, and perhaps this winter respite program, wouldn't necessarily target those folks. It would be on a day-to-day basis, people would line up and say, I've got no place to be tonight, and I'd like to get in out of the cold and the rain. So it would be a different target population.
It's a temporary shelter instead of.
Correct.
Trying to provide services and.
And it's not 24 hours. It's just overnight.
This would be, this would be a roof over their head and a place to put their pets and their possessions on a nightly basis.
How much are you asking for?
I don't have a number in mind. I looked to the CEO.
You'll come back to us.
If we get, yeah, we'll get back to you in September. At that point, we can make a determination how much is the amount.
I think that's fair.
And I think it makes sense.
We were all trying to help each other. We were all trying to get things done.
Yeah. And so maybe it helps save some of that scramble, and we give you some identified resource and.
Question is, is it the county, how much can the county pick up? And how much do we really need to get from our community? I mean, the community was a huge part of that.
No, they were.
No doubt. And I would suspect that if we, you know, had the opportunity or the need to do something similar to what we did a few months ago, that there would be probably an effort engaged to go do something similar relative to finding match funds, to maximize the resources to, you know, shelter as many people overnight as possible.
Okay. All right. So general direction, September, we'll have this on the, on the growing docket of things to, okay. All right. Anything else then, as it relates to that DHA homelessness or anything else? I know that some are connected to some of the discussions.
I have one more question.
Supervisor Frost, you bet. Go ahead.
Sorry.
That's right.
I've never done this before. That 1.9 million set aside, that contingency, is that where all this discussion is coming from? Or I'm trying to figure out how to wrap my head around.
So what we did.
All the money goes to certain programs. It's all in this binder. Okay?
So what happened with this winter one is we worked with the department during the year. We have savings in accounts, and we have some latitude to use it for different things. So when Supervisor Serna asked the question, is there 25,000 that we have available? Yes, we were able to make that available. If we exceed and we don't have the ability to cover that cost, then we come back to the board and say, we need to use the contingency, which is the 1.9 million.
Okay. You're going to let us know when it's, when that starts to dwindle?
Yes. And I need, we need authorization from the board before we tap into that. So it'll be an agendized item, and we come to you and say, here's the need that came up during the year, and this is where we suggest taking the money. Does the board agree with us? When we do that after September, it's a four-fifth vote that the board has to take to tap that money.
Okay. Thanks.
Different than when we're in the budget framework, either June or September?
September, it's three. Once September rolls, it becomes four.
Okay. Very good. Does that continue throughout the summer? Is that open from June to September? It is. Okay.
Because we haven't finalized budget.
Yeah. Okay. Got it. All right. Anything else on DHA or almost, okay, probation department's the next one we heard yesterday. Any thoughts about probation? I just had one question, not so much about probation, but it's on our consent calendar later, but it ties back to this. Item 16 had the job order contracts. As a part of that, it has identified projects on page three. It says the Warney-Thorton Youth Center Facility renovation. That's in the consent calendar?
16?
Item 16 on the consent calendar, yeah.
Item 16, do you want me to go ahead and read that into the record? It's approved bid awards to North Star Construction and Engineering.
Yeah. And so I don't know, that may come through General Service, may not come through you, Lee, but somebody put that in our staff report, is what we're authorizing if we take this up today. So I'm like.
Let us, let us look at that. It's not Lee.
Yeah, I know. You answered it yesterday. That's what I said. I was kind of puzzled as to how this got in here then. So, yeah.
We'll, we'll chase that down.
Okay. Good. Okay. Thanks, Lee. All right. Any else on probation? Not. Then we were back to Parks.
I have a presentation I'd like to make during this.
Okay. Do you want to read the letter into the record first, and then we'll get the presentations, and then we'll get into discussion about what is we want to consider here. So.
Okay. Dear Supervisor Peters.
I'm sorry. Do you have the, do you have the latest one? She sent another one.
Yeah, this was a different, a replacement one.
Came in here.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure.
Dear Supervisor Peters, my husband and I lived near the American River Parkway for almost 25 years. We used the Parkway, both the paved trail and the equestrian trail, five to six times per week. We are Parkway stewards, volunteer at the Great American River Parkway cleanup, and other projects on the Parkway. In this time, we have noticed an increase in the number of homeless and illegal campers. This problem has impacted the quality of life for those that use the Parkway. Active and abandoned camps, and with the associated trash, feces, hypodermic needles, used to be found only in the lower reaches of the Parkway. They are prevalent in all areas of the Parkway. Two recent incidents bring this to light. One Sunday, June 4th, we were walking in the William Pond Park. My husband found a glasses case and opened it and found a drug kit with hypodermic needles, a bent spoon, and other thing we could not identify. This was reported to rangers, and they took possession of this item. It was found in a place where a child or unassuming person may have found it. The other was an incident happened just last night on the levee near Campus Commons Golf Course. We were walking with friends when a homeless person on a bicycle ran into a friend at a high rate of speed. Our friend is currently in ICU at UCD with skull fractures, broken nose, broken teeth, broken hand, and other trauma. The homeless person grabbed his bike and left the scene. Rangers and city police are investigating. And she did respectfully ask that these comments be read into the record. This is from Lee Rutledge.
And that's not the corrected version. The corrected version actually says we are in support of Supervisor Serna's budget request.
Okay.
Here's the, here's the corrected version.
Okay.
We got it.
Yeah, we got, we got a couple of copies here. So, okay.
I guess I didn't get it.
All right. Okay. So if Supervisor Peters would like to make a presentation, Supervisor Serna has made a presentation, and we can all talk about kind of where we go with this item. So.
Yeah. I want to be clear that I certainly do support the Parkway and spending money on the Parkway. I don't believe we should have a military presence in the Parkway. But I also think that this, that we need to take advantage of for some period of time, the proposal from Parks on their cleanup efforts, which I agree need to be done. But this is, this problem of the trash and homeless is not just in the Parkway. And I want to show you a few pictures.
Okay.
These, these are some of the photographs we have of, of trash left by homeless in the unincorporated area and neighborhoods, in the parks, behind office buildings, in front of people's houses. And these are just a few. North Highlands, Arden Arcade, Carmichael. Tents, trash. This is a little bit of an angle, probably kind of hard to see. I don't know how well you can see that one. I guess you can. These are behind office buildings. These are in the creeks. These are near people's homes. Then, of course, the RT sites. This is near Arcade Creek. This is in Fair Oaks. So my point in this is, oh, actually, I'm going to go back to the front. What, when this invasion by homeless campers began in the unincorporated area was when the county started heavy efforts in the Parkway. I think it's terrible that we have to choose on our expenditures, one over the other. And I'm not against adding some money to the efforts that were proposed by the department and the executive, but I want to be really clear that this is going, I'm sure this looks like everybody else's neighborhoods. And that the, the effort that is proposed by Supervisor Serna will push more people into the neighborhoods. And I know Lee Rutledge, and she's a friend, and I know she uses Parkway a lot, and I totally get that, what has happened here. But it's also happening on the streets in Northern Arcade. People are being approached by homeless, and all these dumping incidences and camping incidences. So, you know, if, if we're going to talk about moving money out of other departments into cleanup, I think you have to take, I'd rather spread it over all the areas that we represent, not just the Parkway. And I love the Parkway. I use it. It's in my will, you know? So there's no doubt about that. I just think we can't have a single-minded focus on this. That's my view.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
I was thinking about Bill's presentation yesterday, and I wanted to ask if there's, I have the impression that our homeless initiatives will be targeting everyone everywhere, like what Supervisor Peters just described. But I wonder, since we have a veteran services officer now, if we can, without even needing more money allocated out of the budget, if we can ask our veteran services officer to put together a plan to target homeless veterans, starting with the Parkway, to sort of work closely with our homeless initiatives to, to see if we can't, because a lot of, a lot of the people out there are veterans, and we should be taking care of our veterans. So I was wondering if that might help relieve some of it without actually having to throw more money at it. I just wanted to bring that up.
Absolutely. We will work, we'll work with our veterans officer and see what we can do. Paul?
Absolutely. We'll, we'll work with our veteran services officer and her staff, and work with our homeless folks, and see how we can augment the homeless programs by targeting some homeless, particularly on the Parkway.
I mean, I, I'm really excited to have the veteran services officer, because we've had to refer people to other counties, actually, who needed help. And I'm new, and I'm doing that.
It's about time, and we have.
It's really exciting. So maybe they can go after this and help us out with it.
We will add them to our homeless team.
Okay. I just want to off a comment here, as we're having some discussion. I just got another speaker slip, so we kind of closed testimony. But since you made the trip down here, I'll allow you to weigh in in a moment. But I think the pictures we saw yesterday, the pictures we just saw just a moment ago, if you didn't know where they were, accepting that you might see a fence, you couldn't tell the Parkway from the back of the business park to the front porch to the house. And I guess what that says to me is, and I'm going to repeat what I said yesterday, this issue, and maybe going out a bit of a limb here, it's almost out of control.
I'll saw the limb off behind you.
Okay, very good. And so if that's the case, then as we deliberate this today, and whether it's in the Parkway, it's in the neighborhoods, north of the river, south of the river, east end, west end, incorporated, unincorporated, we, you know, have, I think, taken a, a big step in trying to accommodate, you know, issues related to people's personal situations for homelessness, and we're going to make a, a strong push. But there's another element to this, and it's what we talked about. And I think that we need a multi-product approach. And it may be that we need to shuffle up our budget a bit to deal with it. Because, again, you know, speak very frankly here and very openly, I think what we have at risk, and not to be exaggerative, but maybe Mrs. Peters can, you know, saw the limb off behind me, because maybe she may agree when I'm done saying what I'm going to say, is that we are running the risk in neighborhoods, and we can talk about the unincorporated area for a moment, but certainly even in the incorporated area, that if we don't get a handle on this, those types of conditions and those types of activities, and whether it be related to people who are without a home or not, or just of a criminal or nuisance nature, are going to drive people out of the neighborhoods permanently. They're going to go live somewhere else. You're going to drive businesses out of those neighborhoods, maybe even out of the county, maybe even out of California, because it'll give them the reasons they need to have. maybe even out of California, because it'll give them the reasons they need to have. And as I said yesterday, if you don't feel welcomed and safe and comfortable, and you're given a choice, people are going to get up and leave. And they're going to leave in ever-increasing numbers, and it's not going to be loss of areas in the Parkway for its use, but it's also going to be in our neighborhoods. And so I guess what I'm saying now, and this is, you know, again, I know you get it, it's big, though, and it's going to require, I think, all the collective intellect that's in this room, and some that, you know, are represented by folks, to come together and figure out what we're going to do. And it's not about militarization by any means. It's about, you know, looking at how we're going to, you know, establish that this type of activity of, you know, garbage and human excrement and drug activity is not acceptable in the Parkway, is not acceptable in the street corner down from my house, or your house, or anybody else's house, is not acceptable in the business park, and that we're going to go out there and we're going to do everything we can to make it clear that we welcome people of any walk of life, that they're welcome to live here, even if they don't have a home, but we can't accept these types of conditions. These pictures are despicable. I mean, it looks like a third world country. That's what it looks like to me. I mean, I've seen pictures of that. I've never visited a third world country, but I'm telling you, that's what it looks like. I've seen enough magazine pictures and enough documentaries. That cannot continue to exist in this county. Not at least without us putting up a stand and going at it full force. And we're doing a lot. So this is not criticism, we're not directing this to you. I'm just saying, to me, the emphasis here, and that's why I think, not only Supervisor Serna, but Supervisor Peters, and all of us are speaking to this, and I don't think we can kind of nibble around the edges anymore, because it is having a detrimental effect, and it will result in people who make their home here choosing not to make their home here, businesses that make their home here making choices to go elsewhere, that has a detrimental effect, because we lose the income, we lose the ability for us as a community to thrive and prosper. And this is as essential as anything we've talked about in a long time. And maybe it's just building to a crescendo, we have, you know, we have a budget that you've worked very hard on, but I think that, you know, we may look at putting many millions of dollars in a complement of team. We've got great, you know, great leadership, and I think we need to, you know, roll up our sleeves right here at this die if need be, and figure out how we're going to best deploy the resources we have available to us. And if we can dig into the budget to pull some out, I'm fine with having that conversation today or in a few weeks or whatever, because I think it needs a comprehensive, it needs multi-pronged, and it needs one that's going to be sustained if we're going to make a difference. Otherwise, I think we're going to, despite our best efforts, and whether it's in the Parkway or the neighborhoods, we're going to, we're going to lose neighborhoods, and we're going to lose parts of the Parkway that we'll never, ever regain, I don't believe. So that's my spiel for today. Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Frost?
Mr. Chair, I know we have a.
Yeah, we have a speaker, yeah.
I'd like to hear the speaker, and then I'll go after Supervisor Frost.
Okay, it's a different topic, but Deborah Slay, Deborah, you're here. It's on reinvestment, probation, public safety, and we've kind of concluded the hearings, Deborah, but you made the effort to come down here, so we'll certainly take your comments. You've kind of come into a time where we're in the midst of a pretty strong conversation, so.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Oh, you bet. Thank you for making the trip down here. Sorry, we kind of moved pretty rapidly here this morning, so.
It's okay. Last time I was here, I was on a cane, so I'm doing pretty good. Thank you. Okay, well, my name is Deborah Slay, and I'm one of the leaders with ACT. I'm also a member of the Reinvestment Coalition. We believe that it's time to close the revolving door of the criminal justice system and stop putting county funds into jails. Our county must invest in smart, long-term solutions and encourage public safety for all by establishing a pre-trial program that steers people away from the costly court process and into community-based supervision and services, maximizing split sentencing so people can serve part of their time under community supervision and reduce the length of probation terms, using savings from criminal justice reform policies to expand services that create opportunity and stabilizing instability for formerly incarcerated individuals like job training and housing assistance, ending collaboration with immigration and custom enforcement to detain and deport members of our community. And there's been a recent poll that shows 64% of voters prioritize investment in their communities as a crime prevention strategy over investment in law enforcement, jail, and punishment. So two years ago, I was here. I remember speaking when Phil Serna was before me, and also two years ago, I spoke at a town hall meeting where Mr. Patrick Kennedy was present. I'm the mother of Kenneth Smith. He's a young man that attempted suicide by cop two years ago. It was April 4th, 2015. And since then, I've been having a hard, you know, time getting him the treatment that he needs. The focus was on the treatment and not the charge. My son had served time in prison, and when he had got out, he had pretty much lost his mind and wanted to end his life. So he did, he attempted that, and with a SAC PD officer. He pulled out his cell phone and pointed it at an officer and attempted for them to kill him. He just wanted to end his life. And right now, my son is sitting in prison again because of a violation. And I think what should have happened when he violated his parole, what he did, he had went into psychosis and he had broke out a window on Florin Road, and I think he should have been taken into some type of mental, mental care facility and treated, not put him back into the system. So he's due to get out this Sunday, and I don't see where any rehabilitation has taken place. I don't see where the system worked for him. I fear for him when he gets out, and I just think it's time for us to put the funds where they're mostly needed. And it's really near and dear to my heart that this happened, not only for my son, but for everyone that's family that is impacted by mental health. You know, it's a serious matter here in the, in the country right now. And if we can get a jumpstart on that, it would be very, very helpful.
Okay.
And when you guys are making your decisions, please take that into consideration, that these programs that could be set into place and the money poured into these, these programs are going to help. Because public safety is not only, I mean, I need the police. I do, I need the police, the sheriff, I need the park rangers, I need all of them. But public safety is not only for them to help us, it can start in the schools.
Yeah, we're going to kind of wrap up.
Okay. So public safety is also, you can take a preventative measure in public safety as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Good. Thank you for sharing. And good luck to your son, and you as well. Thanks. Okay. That's all the public testimony I had. So I have punched up Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to be prepared to make a proposal. I don't know if you're looking for specific motions or not, but I suspect it's going to be a, there may be some difference of opinion on it, so I'd like to.
Maybe you have some, you need inter-motion any time you want, but I think maybe there's something more conversation.
Yeah, so I'd like to hear from Supervisor Frost before I do that.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
I just want to go back and I want to react a little bit to the woman who just spoke, and I'm sorry about your son. When I toured the jails, I learned that 42% of the people in our jails are on the mental health roll. So we absolutely, I believe we need to be cognizant of that and sensitive to the fact that there are people in our jails who, that's, to me, a step beyond homelessness or beyond, those are people that somehow disconnected from society and gave up in a way that they didn't even care if they went to jail. And they, they need help, too, and we need, we have a responsibility. And that, our sheriff takes that, and the county takes that responsibility seriously. We want to ensure that we have the resources to prevent situations like that if we can. But the comment I wanted to make today is that I'm cognizant of the fact that we, during the economic downturn, borrowed 70 or 90 million, we're still paying back 38 to 40 million. Our creditors are asking us if we can step it up. It's impacted our credit rating as a county. We don't stack up as superstars with other counties, because we don't have reserves. And so the decisions that we're making regarding, you know, money, I just want to say that, to me, that it should be a priority for us to build our reserves so that we have capital to make decisions and to, to throw at problems when we need to, like this. I also want to be cognizant of the fact that we have potential impact from programs from the state, you know, IHSS MOE, you know, programs on the federal level that are being cut, possibly going to be cut back. Transportation is hanging on by a thread and now has a lifeline, but we're still having to manage it very carefully. And so, you know, I feel that we've, it was, to me, it was a big thing to allocate 6.5 million to the homeless initiatives. But, you know, it is a big problem, and, and I want everyone to know, I'm sorry I didn't get up at 5 o'clock this morning and go around and take pictures in my neighborhoods, because I have pictures that are just as compelling as these supervisors in these two areas, and I'm sure all of us do.
Yeah, we all have.
So that problem is, has permeated the entire county. It's not just at the Parkway, or in Sacramento, or in Arden Arcade. So I wanted to just say that, that I, I hope that we can, I think we have a good plan. I don't know if it's going to work. I'm not sure you can ever fix homelessness. But I think it's going to help. I think we have some good ideas on how we can go after, you know, programs that are going to maximize our funding and help our problems. And I do care about the Parkway. So I guess, I guess my comment relates to, let's not forget to prioritize our credit standing. If you have good credit, you have power, you can make decisions. And also, let's give it time, you know, to work. Let's give our people time to work through, you know, the parks, Jeff Leatherman and, and all the departments. We've invested a lot in this budget on homelessness, and I think we just need a little bit of time to let them have a chance to show what they can do, we could, what we can do with this. So that's my comments.
Thanks, Sue. Okay. Supervisor?
So let me, let me again restate something I said yesterday, which is, it's a preface to my general comments, which is, I want to make sure that our Parks personnel, our Parks Director, our Ranger Force understand that none of us up here are laying blame or trying to demoralize the work that you do, or, you know, otherwise express dissatisfaction with what you're trying to do. You have a very difficult job. We have 24 Rangers, 25, if you conclude a vacant position, for, you know, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of 14,000 acres of parkland asset, 4,500 acres of which is the Parkway. I don't think any reasonable person can look anyone in the eye and say, "That's adequate", or that that has, that's the appropriate force to be able to patrol and keep safe people that want to legitimately use the Parkway. And the maintenance staff, the, I think they're, they've got a tough task as well. They've got the same amount of collective asset to keep clean, and it's just, it's willfully inadequate. I also want to speak directly to the county CEO, because I think, Nav, you do understand my concerns, my frustration. I think you probably understand it from all five of us. I think the disconnect here is that what has been proposed by the CEO in terms of recommended growth is, for me, it is a small fraction of what has to happen, has to happen now, has to be represented by a firm budget allocation to affect the change, the outcomes that we all want. And I, and I, I don't intend to minimize by my proposal or my comments what we're all feeling in our, in our respective districts in terms of the impacts, both human and social, from homelessness. It's pervasive in this county. So the reason I've been so aggressive, and maybe perhaps done a little more in terms of production value here, in terms of stressing my point during these budget deliberations about the Parkway, is I believe that this is absolutely the right time to take a bold step. And yeah, maybe it, it's a difficult decision for some, and, you know, whether it comes at the sacrifice significantly or not of the general fund, I think, remains to be seen. But with the initiatives to address homelessness, being what they are and being as thoughtful as they are, I know I'm proud of what staff has put in front of us, proud of this board in terms of its support for staff over the last year and a half to, to develop and vet that. I'm proud of our community that's gotten, I think, behind it for the most part and provided their insights about, about how to implement new services and add capacity is admirable. But that's the very reason why I think it's the right time to, at the same time, simultaneously, taking that bold step to enhance safety and cleanliness on the Parkway. And do I have any misgivings about the, you know, the well-established concept that when people are asked not to camp on the Parkway, they seek other areas? Yeah, I get that. I have the city of Sacramento wrapped around the lower reach, and I hear it from my constituents in Midtown, I hear from, from folks in downtown Alcoa Flat, I hear from council members that get frustrated. But if you think about it, the alternative is to turn a blind eye, and I'm just not willing to continue to do that, which I think we've collectively done, quite frankly, and just hope it doesn't, you know, surface, so we don't have to talk about the dirty little secret. Well, today, as far as I'm concerned, you know, the sun shines out, and we need to address this problem head-on. And that's why I've proposed what I proposed. I, the only conceptual difference I believe there to be between what I've proposed and what the CEO has proposed is order of magnitude and scale. We've had a number of, I think, productive discussions over the last few weeks, the CEO, and Mr. Leatherman, and Mr. Entoli, and myself, about the difference between the two proposals and its order of magnitude. Do I think what the CEO has proposed, less than a half million dollars to address this, will be adequate? Absolutely not, because I know my district. I know the Parkway. I know more than just the lower reach, believe it or not. So, again, I feel extremely strongly about doing something very, very different. I think the, the concept of having beats, picking a different term if we want, but well-established areas where our staff are not leaving those areas, that's in large part been the problem, is the number of days per week that patrols occur and maintenance attention occurs. But also the fact that what we have today, which again, has been in place since January as kind of. as kind of the new concept to address the issue, which is not, it's not having the outcomes, it's not producing the outcomes we want, is that those, that team moves around, you know, twenty-three miles of Parkway. We should not be surprised by the video I showed yesterday, we should not be surprised by the photos that Supervisor Peters showed today. What I would like to suggest is that I've given, I've given a proposal, which I believe to kind of synthesize my discussions with our Parks Director, our CEO and our Chairman, use that as a starting place. Okay? You heard from, from some of my constituents today, one constituent today, who I agree with. This is, this is a starting place. It's three point eight million dollars, the way it's been costed out overnight by our staff. I've already made mention of the fact that we, I think it would be wise to consider having some of that seasonal overnight capacity for folks that might be coming off the Parkway so that they have a place to be that's not, not there. But let's make it scalable. Let's start with a firm commitment of somewhere in the neighborhood of four million dollars, that's, that's the number that has come back to us overnight. And let's do it with minimal impact to the general fund. I respect Supervisor Frost's comments about our credit rating and Supervisor Peters' comments about sacrifice from other departments, other service provision. I get that, I understand that. But I think there are some creative ways to consider how we fund this. For instance, there is an ongoing conversation right now at the Regional Sanitation District in the form of a committee, looking at non-rate, non-fee revenue that could be used to carry out their mission at the same time, enhance the ability to keep the Parkway clean because obviously it is a watershed. You know, I think there's the prospect, because this issue is important to everyone in that committee as well, that we could get some substantial assistance from that source. I think that there is an opportunity to look at, you know, our enterprise funds. We've got several, but I understand there has to be all kinds of legal nexus established. I think that, the prospect of using funds from enterprise funds needs to be exhausted. Now, do I have a list of, a specific list of how you get to four million to start? No, I don't. But that's why my proposal is that this board make a firm commitment today with direction of staff, that that's where we start, with kind of the framework that I've outlined, that, you know, I'm done with this. I would, again, defer to the experts, Mr. Leatherman, Mr. Gill and others, to figure out as that, using this as a starting place, how best to deploy. Again, kind of using this concept of BEAT deployment. And then to come back in July after recess with a more precise explanation, plan of how and when and who is going to carry out the intent of this initiative, that I've just, for lack of time, just called the Clean and Safe Parkway Initiative, call it something else or not call it anything at all. But I think it's clear what we're trying to do. And so, again, I appreciate all the thought, effort, time that Supervisor, that Executive Gill has put into, into this, Mr. Leatherman and others, but this is the right time to do something much, much more substantial, I think, to achieve the outcomes that, that all five of us want.
I'd just like to offer a thought, too, that obviously a number's been put out, but I would even up the ante, I think, going to the point about the neighborhoods, and it seems to me that you're going to need to call together, just as you do every Thursday, Nav, all your department heads and electors as well, because I think we recognize the multifaceted problem we have here. And so it's not just Parks, it's not just the sheriff or community prosecutor or DHA, animal care code enforcement, go down, you know, I think solid waste needs to be a part of that conversation, not just from the standpoint of the enterprise, but that garbage is coming from somewhere. It's either coming out of people's waste receptacles while it's waiting to be picked up, or it's coming out of somebody's dumpster. And the connectivity and water resources, I mean, it's in our creeks. I mean, again, we have the ability, I think, to pull together not only the talent, but certainly the, I think, under your leadership, and certainly the direction of this board, if there's a will there, to figure out how we're going to combat it on the Parkway and encounter it and do it in a proper fashion, but also in the neighborhoods. And I think that's what the initiative, I would go beyond just the Clean Parks Initiative and it's, you know, Clean Neighborhoods. It's Health and Safety and Quality of Life, and those are all part of our priorities, part of our mission. And I think it's important we have a discussion here today and that we not, obviously, you know, compromise our, our budget. On the other hand, there's enough resources in a four billion dollar budget, not that you haven't already poured over that to bring us the recommendation you bring us, but I tell you, I believe that we need to go beyond what Supervisor Cernan suggested and, you know, look to something that's more than four million dollars, if that's the number he picked, I mean, that, you know, doesn't-
I picked it as a starting place.
Yeah. And the reason I say that is because I think this is going to require an intense effort, probably maybe something unlike we've ever done in this county. And, you know, we have that social service responsibility, so we bear those expenses, and you're putting a lot of money in there. But we also have that responsibility to our neighborhoods, certainly in the unincorporated area, but to the county as a whole. And I, and again, I just, I see this as something that, it may be the biggest challenge ever laid in the lap of a county executive in Sacramento County's history. On the other hand, it's one that if we don't start, we've started in some ways, but I think really build upon that and build upon it rapidly with some deployment and smart use of resources. And so, again, I don't think we're going to solve it here today. I do think, though, that we could be back here in a matter of weeks, at least with a, you know, an outline for how we're going to do that beyond what's already here, and I think give you the budget authority. And again, I would say, you're not just looking at the Parkway, you're looking at it in our neighborhoods as well, and tell us what it's going to take to do it. But I would be willing to go five or six million dollars and say, you gotta, now we're going to have to come back to us and say, "You've got to make some other decisions, board members, or here's funding sources," but I would leave that to you to at least try to sort that out, and then tell us, you know, how much, you know, is left for us to have to figure out, either, you know, in another budget setting or whatever. But this, this is serious enough, in my view, and some funding, funds were made, but I think we could even look at, and this may be, you know, again, treading on thin water because people wanted that resource management plan. We've got six hundred thousand dollars, but I'm concerned about having a resource to manage around, and so are you going to spend all that money this year? I don't know. I don't think, unless a consultant's going to burn a lot of oil. So, maybe there's a way to get to some of this without, again, digging too deep into initiatives that are already there, but I would suggest that SWA, certainly, Sand District, Enterprise Dollars and some other things, and take a look at it. And again, I have good faith in you and Britt to, you know, to try to turn over some more rocks, but also look at some of those areas that may be non-traditional, but we're going to bring them into the, into the, into the fold. And maybe water resources as well, again, so at least on the street, stream and creek management area, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yeah, I did have a punch-up, though.
Oh.
Supervisor Peters, then Supervisor Cernan.
Okay.
Thank you. I want to say again, I just think we're in a really difficult position here, trying to choose between our neighborhoods and the Parkway. Both of them are beloved to our constituents and to us. I do, however, want to say, I can't support four million dollars just to the Parkway. If, I think whatever we do needs to be equally, equally focused on our neighborhoods. I think Don came up with a good idea of maybe in the, during the recess, that staff contacts the departments that you described. I know we've talked about it at SWA, and we've talked about it with, yeah, regional sand and waste removal, that maybe a hand, a letter to all of them to get it on their agenda in July, to come up with some amount of money that they can contribute to the overall cleanup of our neighborhoods and the Parkway, but it has to be addressed equally. And I, I just can't support a one-way train on this just to the Parkway, as much as I love the Parkway. So I'd like to see us maybe put some kind of place marker in the budget. I don't know what the mechanism is, Britt, that we are, or Nav, so we can get through the budget today, but, you know, where you come back to us, because we all sit on all those other boards, too. So we might have something to say about what the outcome of that request is.
So what I'm hearing is that a more comprehensive look, both Parkway and neighborhood, and to have a fairly integrated team from all different county disciplines to come in. I don't think I could give you a dollar amount at this point. If you give me the direction to meet with those folks, get the letters to the appropriate governing bodies that were looking for money, engage with their staff and come back in July, I think we can present you something. I don't think it will be finite with the dollar amount, but I think the conversation will start, and we will, as we start identifying with the enterprise funds, what they will have to identify is the nexus that they have to make for it, and that's our responsibility. But I think next couple of weeks, we can roll up our sleeves, as Supervisor Anatoly said, and start looking at it and come back to you with a proposal, what that will look like, and the impacts it will have on neighborhood Parkway, and what's the tangible impact that we can make a change on.
I think that's a good idea. I also would ask that immediately County Council work with the District Attorney on the chronic nuisance ordinance to see if that can be applied somehow to the Parkway. And I also think that the lawyers for the county ought to be reviewing the forty-eight hour MOU and see if there's some compromise that can be reached because that is tying our hands and other areas don't have that, the jurisdictions don't have that same restriction. And I don't know if anything can be done, but I can tell you this, it's really hard for me to explain to people in neighborhoods that we have to leave tent cities up for forty-eight hours and let them move and can't take them down.
I did speak to the District Attorney's Office about incorporating this issue into their community policing, and they're very, very willing to work with us on that.
That's a good start.
Supervisor Peters, we will, if that's the direction, with County Council, DA, that's one of the items that I had noted from yesterday that we will look at, is how can we get better enforcement in there? Also, I think the question that keeps coming up, and it's the Mirren decision, and that's what kind of governs a lot of our activities on the Parkway, Robin and I have been in constant dialogue, is if, if there's a relief, what would that look like? So I think this gives us a couple more, we're not finding a way, I think Robin's not putting words in your mouth, but we're not finding a way, but that's not to say that we're not going to continue to look, see is there a way for us to get there.
I'm sure that Supervisor Cernan and I would be both willing to loan you the photographs of what's going on in our districts.
I got a video.
You guys can go to production coming together, so.
Cut a DVD.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Cernan, Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Frost.
Just one final thing on the forty-eight hours. When that MOU was signed, that, this situation with the homeless was not contemplated. It was long enough ago that this massive amount of homeless and debris was, was just not in the mix of the discussion, and, but it's kind of bled over into this, so I just want to get, let you know that.
I do understand, it is, it is a court document, so that adaptation with differentiating circumstances-
I'd sure like you to spend some time on it.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. So, I, first of all, agree with Don that, you know, I think we need to look at this comprehensively, but we're having a Parks budget discussion right now. So, while I appreciate that, I don't want us to leave the dais today without, you know, and we could agree to disagree and have a split position on it, but I think this hour, we have to have a decision about appropriating the resources, at least setting a minimum for the Parks component of this. And otherwise, it's beginning to sound really, really soft. And I know sometimes on difficult issues, we dance around things and, you know, we want report backs, but this is a budget hearing. So, I guess I just strongly, respectfully disagree with Supervisor Peters, that four million should be the starting place, the conversation should start there in terms of staff deployment for enhanced cleanliness and safety on the Parkway. I think to Supervisor Anatoly's point, you know, if you want to come back in, you know, a few weeks, July 11th, I think is our next hearing, and explain what the plan is for the surrounding neighborhoods and what the cost is for that, that's, that's fine, but this is a Parks budget deliberation. So, besides this kind of soft direction, I don't think that's appropriate for a budget discussion. So I would like us to get to a place where we're voting thumbs up or down on a significant, substantial increase, admittedly so, for Parks, because again, to me, it's warranted.
Okay, all right. I'm Supervisor Kennedy.
I have a few comments. First of all, so I hear, what I'm hearing is that it's heading in the direction of perhaps giving direction for a budget allocation, but not being prescriptive as to how that budget allocation is spent, is that what you're talking about?
With a pretty well-described framework and using the spreadsheet that we got today from staff.
Okay. Because I, to be honest with you, Supervisor Cernan, the, the plan that you put forward yesterday, the, with the districts and all that, the precincts or whatever you want to call them, you know, as much as, you know, for me, the layman sitting up here, that sounds like a great idea, I'd have trouble supporting that today because I'm not an expert. I haven't had even the luxury of discussing it with, you know, yesterday was the first time I saw it. I haven't even had the luxury of discussing it with Mr. Leatherman or others in staff. So I just had real trouble looking at something that prescriptive when I have not had the people who work for the county, who are experts, had the benefit of hearing from them. So I couldn't support anything as prescriptive as that. As far as a budget mechanism, does that work? Could we leave here, I mean, we can leave here today as long as we budget it out, but we can't just leave it out there that some kind of money, can we? I mean, we have to make it with today's budget.
So if we give you a five million dollar figure, for example, just round it up, and said you come back with a program to address neighborhoods and Parkway, and with the components, and start there.
I think the issue we'll run into is that where will we balance the line item, and we were trying to avoid having, say, if you have to take it here, we don't know if it's going to be five million, we don't know what that dollar amount is.
But we gave you a target number, again, I know you know what it was going to be, but that gives you the ability to start building a program, recognizing the scope.
If you give me a target number that you're looking for, you're looking for a-
No preliminary budget.
Preliminary budget, but if you give me a-
No preliminary budget.
If you give me a target number saying that you want X amount, what would X amount of money that takes care of the Parkway and X amount of money to take care of the neighborhoods? That, we can then go back and work and come back to you.
Well, we, I mean, in all honesty, and again, as Supervisor Cernan said, this is a Parks discussion right now and that, the neighborhood discussion, I mean, we got six million dollars toward the homeless programs, which is supposed to address those issues already. It's not like we're starting at ground zero here.
Correct.
So, you know, and the other thing is, is that, and frankly, you know, it sounds like we're softening things by kicking the can down the road somewhat, and as Supervisor Cernan said, dancing around the issue, and I don't agree with that. We're not dancing around the issue because I have to hear, if we're going to augment the budget to that degree, which I'm not saying I'm opposed to, I do think we need to do more for the Parkway. But, you know, last time I checked, you know, we print agendas at the county, but we don't print money. And so I'd have to find out, you know, because we're not talking about a small amount of money here, we're talking about a significant amount of money, and I have to feel comfortable as far as, you know, how, how is that going to impact the rest of our budget and all of the other priorities that we have.
Maybe you come back with what happens at three million, what happens at four million, what happens at five million?
But we still have to come up with some kind of a number today.
Correct.
So give you the top number, then you tell us, you back into that, then. We give you a top number and you build a program for us.
Well, it depends what, what direction you want to go in, is a couple of choices you got here. You can put a hard number, saying it's going to be X amount of money, and this is what the program's going to be. Under that option, then we will be looking at balancing the budget, making changes, things that we got to make to balance it. The other option is, there's number A, B and C that the board's interested in looking at for the Parkway, not the neighborhood, I understand that, and come back in July, show us what A, B and C, what does that get us, what's the deployment, and where are you going to get the funding to get it done, and then the appropriation decision can be made at July 11th.
I don't get some others punched up, so let me understand. So you, you gave two options there, one we could give you, you know, a, you know, a range of money between three and five, or say five's the upper limit, you build a program, both Parkway and neighborhoods, and you come back, or you just do Parkway separately?
That's a, comments that I want to make sure is that there's been mixture on, are you looking for the finite money for Parkway? Are you looking for money for Neighborhoods? So whichever decision you go in, so it's A, B, and C, come back, what would that look like?
Oh, okay.
So we need clarity is that, are you looking for specific, just the Parkway? Or are you coming in and saying it's the Parkway and the broader Neighborhood impact? Those two could be two different numbers.
Right. That's why you got to go up with it.
As Supervisor Kennedy said, is that we have put $6.5 million into the homeless programs to address some of the Neighborhood issues and Parkway issues too. We don't see those mutually exclusive, but if the board wants to, we can have two different packages for you.
Or a package that's integrated. You could have an integrated package.
Yes, integrated package.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Cern.
One, why do we have to put a number on it? Why can't we, since we already have a homeless initiatives that we're putting forward in this budget, why can't we have you go back and talk to solid waste and see if there's a way to manage the refuse in the unincorporated county and to kind of tackle that? That includes everything in the unincorporated, or the Parkway and unincorporated? Is that what we're talking about? Parkway is not just unincorporated, but it would be the Parkway and the unincorporated where we're focusing on garbage from, you know, how can we do a better job at cleanup? Why do we have to put a number, or why do we have to put a number on it?
Well, because we're in budget hearings, and I think if we're going to give a direction to your, I mean, we can do this now, we can do it later, we can do it not at all, but the bottom line is, is that we're in budget, and so if they're going to have direction, you know.
We're just giving them direction to go back and look for it somewhere.
Yeah, define, and they have to tell us. It may mean us going into something, yeah. You know, so if we say, you know, give us the range from three to $5 million, or four to $5 million, or $5 million, whatever that number is, then they have to, you know, have to be back here with us, July 11th, that's the date we're shooting for, is to talk about how then that would be allocated, either to Parkway, Neighborhoods.
This isn't for parks, or is it? Did we decide?
Well, we're talking about parks budget, but we're talking about it in, you know, in a broader context here. If that's what the board agrees on, if we agree we need to do it both, we can't just, we can't leave it, we can't push it out, so.
So I guess Phil was going to make the motion, have we decided whether it's for parks or for the entire?
We have two options. Parks only or?
Number for parks.
And is there a place in the budget with the money, or does, where does the money come from? Do you anticipate you can find a place?
Not at this moment. That's why the two options that were put forward is that if it's option A, we will have to identify where we will balance the budget. That's something Britt and I'll have to look at, how we balance that. Option two, which is the option that you identify, what's your target number that you're looking at, and you direct us to go get the operational, how would that look like? And then you also, we will come back with a package that will explain what the funding sources will be to fund that program for you. It's what I've heard. Look at enterprise funds, we can look at existing general fund programs, all that will go into our mix to come back and say, this is where we'll get the money to fund this for you.
But we don't have to do that. We can say, we want to, moving forward, we want to look at opportunities. We don't have to put a number in this budget for that. We don't have to add that.
Yes, we do. We have to put a number in the budget for parks.
Okay. I guess I respectfully disagree, that I'm not sure we have to do that right here, right now.
Yeah, can you help, again, I understand the issue here. So if we gave you $5 million as being the number and said, as a part of that.
The number just keeps going up.
Okay, I'm just using it for example. You start with 50 cents if you want. My point being, if you gave you, I'm just asking, because if you're going to have them go scrub it out, you might as well know what you're going to get. And they can tell you, for this, you get this, and then you got to make this decision or not. So you need $3 million if you want. But if you, my point was going to be, if you plugged the number in for parks as a part of that overall number, if that was the choice of this board, and then said, you give us that parks component, see what that looks like, and then you give us the Neighborhood component as an additive, and it can be a million apiece, it can be two million, it can be three, whatever. I mean, obviously, the board's got to decide on something, but for today's purposes, to plug that in, we have the ability to give that number. What does that do then to the budget piece of this then? How would we plug that in to give you that guidance?
If you want to plug a number in, whatever number you tell us, we got to deduct it out of somewhere else.
Right.
And the two options that will be on the table is contingency and interfund transfer loans.
And all the other prospective sources, including regional sand and possible, you know.
I don't have a link to it.
Hold on, hold on. Let me point something out.
Go, you're up in the season.
Let me point something out. We had a healthy discussion about the homeless initiatives yesterday, which I think has garnered broad support here. Those initiatives, in large part, in some part, are hinged on outside sources assisting us in the funding to fulfill those, the mission of those initiatives. I see this as no different than that, because we're saying, okay, well, to do full-service shelter, we're going to need some assistance that has been generally given to the county, not in writing to my knowledge yet, about how we fund full-service shelter. So what I'm, here's what I'm looking for, is that there be a commitment to a number associated with the growth interest for parks budget today in the recommended budget that is associated with the need to do much more. That we give direction to staff to look at the two sources that the CEO has just mentioned, but also from the discussion over the last 30 minutes or so about some of these other sources. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
The homeless initiatives that we've identified, we've identified funding and we've identified our programs behind it. There is a component of it, Sutter, and that one, when that comes in, it will be recognized. If your desire is to say, put in $5 million for parks, and the $5 million is going to be coming from solid waste or water, somebody else, you could put that in there, but I will have to work with County Council on if that's a balanced budget and the rational nexus that we got to create going forward. So that's kind of, I'm looking at, Robin.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
And I would just add that these are particularized funds based upon, you know, going back to the Prop 13 restriction on government, that funds be identified and property-related. The solid waste does have a 218 component that was analyzed in the engineering and economic study based upon that fee, but that refuse enterprise fund is $450,000 that's already added to some of the homeless parks' waste removal. To have discernible discretion to go beyond that fee would require a solid waste mission that has a byproduct of cleaning up waste in the Parkway or cleaning up waste in the Neighborhood, but it would have to be part of the overall, already voted-for initiative that that fund and that fee is based on.
But this, let me point out, if I could, on the key for landfill, it has bond covenants because of some of the improvements that are out there. However, if recollection serves me right, this board retains the ability to adjust tipping fees as related to costs associated with that and so forth. It does back into some of the curbside rates, because obviously, we serve as our own backup for that. Again, you're the attorney and the expert on this, but it would seem to me that we have the ability, and we're not going to do that today. But those are the types of things where I think if we parse them down some more, we certainly can make connectivity between what's not getting in the garbage container to get to the dump, it's getting in somebody's, you know, backyard or parking lot or on the Parkway, and the cleaning up of that, maybe that's already where you've gone with this. I guess one thing I would offer is that the ability here is to make some direction around parks, but also around general budget, and we could, for the purposes of, for a few weeks, could bridge it over, as you said, you could make the budget balance and come back with, you could keep that portion of it open, you could adopt the recommended budget with some accommodation for whatever number, if this board majority would agree on it, were plugged in, and then come back and refine that, I trust, because that is open. So we have the ability. So you could plug a number in now, you could say it's interfund, or you could say contingency, leave a few bucks in there, you're going to come back in a matter of two or three weeks, and we're going to address this again and try to, you know, refine it more and figure out if we get the revenue sources to support it, so.
So we could put in $1 million for debris removal from the Parkway and $1 million for debris removal from the Neighborhoods and direct you to come back to us with how you would add up to five, you know, what we say, three, four, and five, although we've already spent two. So, something along that line. Would that solve the passing the budget today problem?
I believe so. I mean, that, what we will have to do, it's an internal issue we're having about it, is where the money's going to come from.
Right.
That's what Britt's whispering at me on this.
I know.
And I think if to give that, it will be most likely an unbalanced budget until we reduce some line items, with knowing that we're going to come back on July 11th to true it up and what we're going to do with it.
Okay.
Or we could pass the parks budget as it is and have you come back on July 11th with how to.
Augment it.
Augment it on the amounts that we described earlier.
We could do that, and we also, again, again, if this needs a little more pondering, not for today's purpose, but we are, we're going to be in session tomorrow, and this is an issue that we need to grapple with, to the point being made here, so that we don't, so our budget man doesn't, you know, go away, you know, with.
Heart failure.
Yeah, heart failure or 20 sleepless nights. Again, you know, understanding discussion, if we get some, maybe some guidance, we can even come back again after lunch on this, I'm not going to cut the discussion short by any means, or we can come back tomorrow.
I think we're going to be in the same spot. If you tell us $5 million, right?
We can't do it overnight.
We're not going to do it overnight. $5 million's going to come out of somewhere. We just got to figure out a line item that we're going to go in and take five out and be done with it until we come back on July 11th, and then whatever, either we restore that line item or we find something else. That's why if the board so desires, and I understand the need to put a number in, but if you tell us what you're looking for, we can come back to you on July 11th and say, this is what that will look like, and here's where the funding, and here's the program for it.
I'm good with that.
Here's, can I chime in?
Build in two and then.
Here's the problem, is that we've been down that road before too. And most recently, the response was what was implemented in January. So what's being implemented in January and what is being proposed by the CEO and his recommended budget moving forward to memorialize that structure is not working. So I don't have a lot of faith in kind of this, you know, just give us the general, and it's not personal, it's just, it doesn't, it feels extremely soft.
Supervisor Cern, I think what I want to make very clear is that what I'm suggesting under option two is you give us concrete dollar amounts that you all are looking at.
Okay.
For us to come back on July 11th and say, for amount A, this is what you'll get, this is where we get the money. Amount B, same thing, amount C, how many options you guys want. I was not looking for a, just a general direction, go fix it. I understand that there's a desire to come back with something, with some dollars attached. Actually, we want to have some idea on dollars, because that gives us an idea on how much to scale it, how much not to scale it. And I think this conversation will help us kind of tailor that. And if we see something else next couple of weeks, we find out that it's going to be more than that. We want to have that option too, to come back and say, you gave us up to amount C, but it's going to cost a little bit extra.
Can I, can I make one observation here? Is that when Chair Natale and I and Mr. Leatherman had met a couple of weeks ago, and we had this very discussion, like, well, we focused on, the discussion was focused on outcome. So the outcome being cleaner, safer Parkway, what would it take? This, well, I guess it's been interpreted that this is prescriptive. I've done everything I can to preface it almost every time, that I only did this as a framework to kind of communicate a concept. Do I think that this is, I think I started my commentary today, that I don't have any impression that this is going to be the structure. It gives you an idea of my thought process. But let me finish my thought, please. So we had the conversation with Mr. Leatherman, because he is the expert, and we sought his expertise to tell us, what would it take to achieve these outcomes? That was kind of, that was the question. He came back, he drafted a memo, I think we're all copied on it, that explains from the expert, what it would take to do that. So some of this work that is being alluded to, I think, has been done.
If I could, Supervisor Wade, I just would say, I think we're fairly close on this in the sense that we, you know, got a proposal that you just referenced, but I heard Supervisor Peters say, you know, maybe you allocate a million each for trash disposal or removal. You're looking at the park ranger component, you're looking at other components, social services, you're also looking at neighborhood enforcement. It seemed to me that you could, as a starting point, or with your options, you know, give your, you know, three, four, five million, recognizing that, you know, there are certain components that are essential to making this work, both in the Parkway and in the Neighborhood. And I would just say that I could get comfortable for today's purposes to give you that $5 million outside number and say that, you know, the parse component, we're already, you recommended $449,000, we could go for, even if we just did a half split, at that point, you're at $3 million for Parkway. But recognizing that, you know, this is a comprehensive approach, but that, you know, there's a focus certainly on the Parkway, but that, you know, we know there's going to be a spillover in the Neighborhoods. So I think we're fairly close. But Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Kennedy, then Supervisor Frost. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I guess what I'm trying to say here, and I'm going to repeat myself, I think, is that I can't support just throwing out a concrete $5 million and not come back with a plan until I see where it's coming from. You know, everyone, every, all five of us up here have things that are extremely important to us and our constituents, and just writing a blank check and not knowing, is it going to come out of mental health? You know, is it, is it going to come, where's it going to come out of? And until I see that, I can't throw out a number. You know, this is, this is, I've been up here now, this is my third, I've seen, you know, where we've augmented the budget here and there, but a $5 million chunk out of a balanced budget? That's something I have a lot of heartburn over.
I think this is like the homeless initiatives, where we ask staff to come back with some ideas and what we should do and how much it should cost, and they did.
Casey, Supervisor Frost.
I want to reiterate also that we are allocating $6.5 million additional funding to homelessness. We're giving an extra $600,000 to the parks. We're already in the budget, we have a plan, and there's moving pieces that have, we have a plan that hasn't had a chance to come to fruition. And then I will reiterate and repeat that where's the money coming from, because I can't think of one place in the budget where there's something, I mean, I want more resources for mental health. I support the sheriff and the jails, I support probation, I support reserves. I can't, I don't know where the money will come from, and I don't know what the plan is, so I don't know how to just throw a number out there and say, yeah, let's throw this number at that. Because we don't know what we have to do until we see how the plan we have plays out and we put together, you know, it's, there's too many moving pieces to put a number on it today.
Okay. And I don't want to intercept the opportunity, Cern, for Mr. Cern. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just want, for the people that are texting me, I'm getting your texts, it's not that I don't care about the park. I know about the heroin. I personally know about heroin. And it's not just in the parks, it's in the streets, it's in the cities, it's with people, it's not just in the garbage. The problem has permeated everywhere, and I have compassion for it. This is not about that I don't see that there's a problem, I just feel we need to attack it in a planned, methodical way.
Okay, thanks. I have a charge to say, I don't want to intercept anybody's ability to make a motion here, recognize I, you know, get a sense of where the board's at, so I'm going to just offer this, and then I turn to my colleagues if they want to make a motion, is that, it sounds to me like there's an opportunity here to direct. it, it sounds to me like there's an opportunity here to direct, assuming that there wasn't a support vote for actually a firm allocation for parks, and I understand Mr. Serna's desire to do that, and, and we can certainly take a vote on that, but to give direction to, and I guess, I don't know how we keep this open on the budget docket, I think that's probably a concern, and probably a legitimate one, as relates to coming back in three weeks with, you know, an A, B, or C, and, you know, and we may have a very similar conversation or a different one, depending upon, I guess, what you would bring us. So that could be a motion, and we could, you know, use 3, 4, and 5 million as the A, B, and C, and, you know, you have it for parks and neighborhoods initiatives, and see what that looks like, and/or we can take a vote up or down on the parks, and so I'll just defer my colleagues to however.
Are you, are you offering the, the first statement you made about the 3, 4, 5 as a motion?
Well, I was going to, I was suggesting we could do that, and then, you know, and that would be the guidance we'd give to, to staff, to come back to us on July 11th with, you know, I mean
Go ahead and approve the budget as, that is presented in the budget with the direction that we really want to see some progress made on trash removal, both on the parkway and the neighborhoods, and come back to us with a spreadsheet on 3, 4, up to 5 million, where it would come from, and how it could be spent.
And any, and changes to the budget at that point?
Right.
And changes to the budget, so there may be additional revenues that you make, you may find some other savings, you're going to have a little better idea about fund balances by July 11th, you won't know for certain.
Correct.
Oh, Brett, you must have some inside sources.
So that's, it's
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I think that would pass, help us get past this hump, but also give us a firm date to understand relative to your thoughts, Mr. Serna, about the parkway and mine about the neighborhoods and
Does this put a number then, or does this ask him to change the budget? Is this a formal request?
No, I'm saying, let's go ahead with the budget as presented, but come back to us on July 11th with the results of talking to the departments and other ideas you might have about raising, where, where additional money might come from and how we could spend it.
Not putting a number on it. You're saying not put a number.
The, the budget would be as proposed unless we make any other changes, but, but the direction could and would be that county executive would give us, bring back options, and we use it for how we would, you know, start an initiative, and where the funding sources would be, it would involve certainly the parkway focus, as well as the neighborhood, and they could do a 3, 4 million dollar option, and those are reasonable numbers to work with within the budget framework, and bring that back for our consideration, and I guess, you know, up or down on, on July 11th.
Yeah, with, with a budget adjustment.
With the budget, yeah, so you bring a budget adjustment.
I think that's the part for me.
Yeah, okay.
Because I just don't want to, you know, send staff away to come back with a plan, and then there's no point in time where we're actually making a hard and fast decision on the budget.
I would make that a motion.
So we're approving the budget as is with direction?
We're, we're not taking it as final action budget, but we're leaving the budget as is as the backdrop, we're not
Yeah, it's, it's not, yeah, it's not, it's not finalized. The recommended budget will not be finalized, right?
No, it's finalized.
Budget's finalized by July 11th, and we'll come back with, we're going to come back with a plan that has budget adjustments to put that amount into the budget.
But that, that will be the recommended action item?
July 11th.
Yeah.
So basically, we're just moving the discussion forward.
No, we're, we're closing the budget today. That's, that's the important thing we have to do today.
We, we close the budget
Come back with a budget augmentation on July 11th.
Adjustment, yeah.
On debris and trash removal, and where it would come from, and how it should be spent.
The other thing I'd need some clarification is that we've talked in general terms about numbers, and what is the board's desire? What do you want to see, A, B, and C? What's the numbers that you all want to see?
I, I would say yes, is that part of the motion, the 3, 4 million?
4 and 5.
3, 4, 5 million, yes.
Yeah, 3 million, 4 million, 5 million.
Yes, okay, got it. All right, so the motion understood, so the budget framework is here, Ms. Frost, we are giving direction for them to come back on July 11th with a discussion and a proposed recommendation of, for us to choose from, if we still do about a budget augmentation adjustment, whatever form that takes, and it'll be before us properly to, to implement at that point in time with as we choose to do, but this budget will remain the same for purposes of the next few weeks anyway.
Four weeks.
Does that, does that make sense? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, and with the, risk of interrupting what we're doing here, I have a presentation, and so we've still got a few more things to plow through, so I had mentioned at the start of this, we would take a lunch break, come back at 1 o'clock, so.
Yes.
All right, so why don't we do that? We will break now, return here for 1 o'clock for continued deliberations, consent calendar, all the
Basically, what we have left is adoption of the budget, because I think this was the main item we had to discuss, and adoption of our consent item.
And we still got a couple of other budget units, we still have the human services, I think animal care, and a couple other ones, so. Yeah, Ms. President, anything? Okay, all right, we're going to break, we'll be back here in session 1 o'clock. Good afternoon, we'll come back into session for the June 14th Board Supervisors Meeting regarding the budget, and we'll call a roll, establish, reestablish a quorum, please.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Hello. All right, we've, we'll continue down through our sub-agenda for any questions on the items that were presented yesterday, and I think we left off with regional parks, was there anything else on parks budget that beyond the conversation direction we gave, any other particular item? All right, then we'll move to animal care and regulation, and I just, I, I had a question for staff on, on, on that, and that relates to, proposal was outlined yesterday by Director Dickinson, as related to this wellness team, and where we are with the contract positions, we had a vacancy that's been close to six months, I know there's another contract position, and how soon this team is going to be up and, up and running, that's my question. Rob, if you can field it.
Certainly. So the, so the animal wellness team is proposed to be comprised of existing staff and contractors, and then two additional, if, as approved by the board, two additional intermittent people. We have the contract positions, the cat position that is focused to this point on, on cats, has been vacant for some period of time, the individual that was in it is no longer functioning in that role. The department has put out, in essence, feelers to solicit interest, and will be initiating the formal process next week to advertise the position to fill that. We do know that there is some interest from several individuals, and so we're hopeful we'll get a good candidate in that fairly quickly. And then, as it relates to filling the two intermittent positions that were part of the proposed budget, there is, those would be hired off an existing animal care attendant list, there would be interviews of individuals that are currently on that list, best candidates would be pulled in to fill those intermittent positions. So that would comprise the, the animal wellness team that we, that we mentioned. We do have an existing animal care attendant who is functioning as the lead for that group right now, and she's doing a very good job, so.
Are you using community members on your panels for hiring now as a part of
There will be individuals on the panels that are not part of the organization, they may be from one of the other shelters in, in the region, or perhaps a community person.
Yeah, I, I would just say, this is my view, but I think we're better served, or best served by having both on the panels, I think particularly as we look to enlarge the organization and enhance what we're doing, I just, I think that profits the organization and the animals. And as it relates to the other contract position, has that contract been, is it expired, or is it in, in being renewed, or what?
No, it, it has not, it, it has not expired. This would be the dog, the dog-focused foster rescue position. The individual that's in it has been in that position as a contractor for some time. The contract is coming up in, in part, and we are prepared, or Dave Dickinson, the director, is prepared to, to act on a new contract for that position. The scope will, will, in part, is reflective of the outcome of the board's decision on the wellness team, and either the scope will remain just as it is, or it will be augmented or broadened to reflect the, the charter of the wellness group that we've talked about.
Okay, thanks, that's my questions then for today, thank you, Rob. Okay, any else on animal care? All right, if not, then Health and Human Services. Reports back. Any questions? Okay. All right, we took probation already, so, any other county department, any member of the board wish to at this time address that wasn't already talked about today? All right, that brings us to the hour of decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what we would request at this point is that you adopt the resolution that is found under the tab in your budget book entitled Board Letter. There's a resolution approving appropriations for fiscal year 1718, and then directing us to come back in September for final budget hearings, and then also direct the Department of Personnel Services to prepare an administrative salary resolution amendment to reflect the positions approved by the 1718 recommended budget.
Is there need to incorporate the direction was given in the motion that was previously done just before lunch break relative to that as a part of any budget framework?
I don't believe so, I think we got pretty clear direction.
Okay, so that point of reference is
It's in, it's in our record.
No, I know it is, I'll be sure.
I think also with this, we would also add the four positions
Correct.
From the DA's office, and then we will fund the public outreach for CalFresh, that, that's not a deletion in the budget. Those are the only two changes we would have.
Okay. All right, any other questions, or not entertain a motion?
If there are no further questions, I would move to adopt the budget for 1718 fiscal year, including the recommended budget resolution, the Personnel Services resolution, and including, well, Nav just described them, said I didn't need to put them in the, my motion, excluding the following items that are on the screen for potential conflict of interest from me.
Okay, so
Give me a second.
Okay, that's the motion, we would note that it's been portrayed on the screen, those budget units that are excluded for the purpose of this motion. Supervisor Serna.
Just a point of clarification on process, are we going to then entertain another motion?
For the balance, yes, we will.
For the balance.
Yes.
But this one is, does or does not include regional parks? It does, right?
I believe it does, and can we get the screenshot back up, please?
Yes, it does, that, that does include regional parks, excluding anything that has to do with Mather, that's up on the screen.
Okay. If, I assume we can do this, I'd like to register a no vote on regional parks.
Okay, so, with the motion before us, is it just excludes Mather, you're saying? Is that what it does? It does include the rest of the park, parks budget, right?
Correct.
So, so, okay, so we're just taking the Mather, we'll come back, the next, next motion will be the one we're going to vote on the entirety of it, so.
But this is the, this is the appropriate place if I want to register that vote, right?
Actually, yes, it is, yes, it is.
You want to pull out parks to make it a separate vote?
Yeah, I just wanted, I want it reflected in the record, I'm a no vote on parks.
Okay.
This is just regional parks as presented in the budget?
Right, correct. Okay, all right, so, understand the motion, we had a second, and with that, then if there's nothing further, please vote.
The motion passes with Supervisor Serna, I'm sorry, unanimous vote.
Yeah, but with Supervisor Serna voting
Registering a no vote on regional parks.
Registering a no vote on one portion of it, so for the balance.
We're not going to vote again.
I'm sorry, let me restate that. So the motion passes with Supervisor Serna voting no for the parks.
Yeah, whatever that budget unit is, right up there, it keeps moving around, so it's not the
That works.
Okay.
And I just, may I just address the board, please? I just want to be sure that we understand that these are the items that she's excluding, so this motion is for everything that is on here is what she's excluding.
Right, and then we're going to have a motion to take all this up in just a moment, so.
So we have not voted on regional parks yet?
Yes, we have.
Correct, you have not voted on
With the exception of the portion on Mather. So the budget unit is 640000, it's, we voted on all of that, but the portion that relates to Mather, on regional parks. Just a no.
So we'd be voting on the balance?
Yeah, we'd be voting on the balance, so we need a motion then to vote on the balance, which is all, all of this.
Correct.
Move to approve the balance.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, just move a second then to approve the balance, as noted in the record that's been displayed, and if nothing further, then please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay, that's a big step. Now we have consent items, and there are some, are some questions, I saw there were some questions and some comments on some of those items, but do you have other, other budget resolutions?
No, I just had a couple of items on consent that I wanted to call out
Yes, so let us
To give you some information.
Give us a second to catch up with you.
Cause I'll all catch up with you, there's only 60 items there. So we've taken item two and item three already, correct? And we're going to drop item four, and then we're going to go into reports back on the rest of it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we actually took the CIP, whichever item that is underneath here as well.
Okay.
Yeah, what we did, we did two, two, three, the budget resolution, going to drop four.
Okay, so I'll, I have my notes for you guys. I do need a motion to drop item number four, approval of staff, staffing plan and operating cost statement, and Rio Consumnas Correctional Center lifecycle cost analysis for the Correctional Center.
So move
Drop item four.
Drop item four.
Yes.
Move a second, okay, please vote. Mr. Serna, did you want to talk? Did you punch it up before? I didn't, I had you punch it up, is that?
Oh.
No, you just didn't clear.
Okay, I'll get it cleared, okay, just be sure, okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then for my notes regarding the consent matters, for item 58, I need a motion to continue to June 15th.
Could you read the item, please, what item is that?
I'm sorry, for item 58, that's the proposed analog property and business improvement district, adopt the resolution of intention to form the district.
All right.
Second.
Okay, move a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. I also need a motion to continue item 59, proposed WAT and El Camino Property and Business Improvement District, it's the resolution of intention to form a district.
Or continuing this to tomorrow, is that what you said?
June 15th.
Okay.
All right.
So move.
Second.
Move a second, continue till tomorrow, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And that concludes my notes.
Okay, we have some verbal reports on a couple of these, there's one
Supervisor Natoli, item number 16, Ms. Evans, can you read that in the record?
Yeah. Okay. Item 16, approve bid awards to North Star Construction and Engineering Incorporated, Staples Construction Incorporated, and X-Pond Development Incorporated for job orders.
So the question this morning was that we had indicated improvements to the WAT Thornton facility, that should not have been in there, that was an example, and, and this is our job order contracts that we have, so it was an error that we kept that facility in there as an example.
All right. Very good, okay.
Next item 21.
And the next item 21, adopt salary equity adjustment for the Sacramento County employees' retirement system, chief executive officer.
I'd like to invite David Devine to address the board on this item.
Was there a reason why we didn't have a written report?
We have been working through this, that's, and we will put this formally in the record.
Okay, that's important, yes, okay, go.
Good afternoon, board members, David Devine, Director of Personnel Services. This is a report back from the meeting from last week, in which we were asked to take a look at the job description for the retirement administrator. Staff contacted the consultant who was working on the recruitment, and prior to the recruitment, they did a very comprehensive job analysis on the position, and also we took a look at other agencies, the comparable agencies, the seven, to take a look at their job descriptions, and taking a look at their job description in conjunction with the consultant, we're confident that the position is operating at its skill level. And there was some, a little nuance in terms of the board of, retire, the retirement board had a special emphasis on the investment structure, and that is something that they were looking for someone to come in with a very complex or a highly qualified background in that area. So the information or the analysis that we found didn't really support us moving off our recommendation of setting the salary at the median. However, taking that into consider, taking consideration scurs ability to attract and recruit, and to be able to find a highly qualified person, kind of, kind of worked up a, kind of a different solution that kind of maintains both our positions. One, we would set a salary control point at the 50% median, which would be $230,400. step and the control point without getting any further approvals. However, if they found someone who really knocks their socks off or who's very exceptional, they can always go beyond the control point, but that would require approval of both the SCURS board and your board. We kind of see that as kind of a good solution. I talked to Annette Stener-Bain at PERS. I don't think there was any opposition, but she is here in the audience if you need to have that discussion. But that's all I have, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Supervisor Kennedy?
Just from a practical standpoint, I mean, how does that work? Cause you're kind of negotiating contracts, I mean, salaries and all of that, so, I mean, does that happen? Cause we can't do that in closed session, right? I mean...
What they would do is like, generally what we do is we have an advanced step placement that the county executive approves here within the county. It would probably follow that step of their negotiation, and when they approve the agreement to bring SCURS, the SCURS board has to, by most, their own board have to approve the appointment, and that appointment would come to you, that anything over that salary threshold of the median.
So, at that point, it would already, it would be like an agreement pending board approval?
Correct, your affirmation.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Other questions, Dave? Okay. Does one have anything else you need to add? You'd like to come forward?
Do you have something different you want to say?
Sure, okay, please come forward, okay. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you, Chair Natoli and Supervisors, for the opportunity to address the county's proposal. And while that proposal certainly does get closer to the board's goals, I am compelled, as I'm doing my job, to state at the outset that it really is the SCURS board's preference that you affirm its original recommendation on the CEO's salary range. However, in the event you do not take that action, from SCURS perspective, successful application of the county's alternative approach would greatly depend on the cooperation of county administration and all of you in setting the actual salary of the candidate the board selects to serve as CEO, both as its starting salary as well as in future salary adjustments in subsequent years. Two of the remaining concerns for SCURS are, the contingency on the salary level above median could continue to be an impediment to the executive search consultants efforts on behalf of SCURS to recruit the best talent for the CEO position. And then there is the issue of timing in the actual implementation of the county's proposed alternative. And the concerns are these, while the retirement board can act quickly when it's working through its negotiations with a selected candidate, it can take significant lead time to get an item on this board's agenda. And we, that's especially true depending on the time of year. So, if we're running into holiday season or, again, at end of fiscal year, that can be a challenge. I'm advised, based on SCURS past experience, that we can envision a scenario where our request to add an item to your agenda on the CEO's salary for approval could be turned down or delayed, which could cause significant issues in the timing of finalizing negotiations with the candidate and the commencement of that candidate's employment with SCURS. So, while we are not insensitive to the county's concerns about deviating from its customary practice when making equity adjustments to salaries following a compensation study, we also believe the SCURS board has documented and provided a sound rationale for its decision and original recommendation to this board, that an exception is warranted in this instant. Thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you for comments. So, I guess I would just ask, you know, I heard what Supervisor Kennedy asked, seeming like it was more of a streamlined process. I'm not so certain it is now, hearing least comments here, so run through what it is. I understand that, you know, that the bubble point, if it's beyond 230, you gotta have both the SCURS board and us act.
So, Supervisor Natoli, basically, what our proposal is, that if they find a candidate that is at a higher level than what the control point is, SCURS board has to authorize it and then comes back to you. And if they get something to us, can't speak about the past, I don't know which examples are out there, but if we find out that they have a candidate that's ready to go, we meet every two weeks and we'll put that in front of you for you to vote on it. In our mind, it's no different than when we recruit, for any executive in the county that needs a county confirmation, board supervisor confirmation, we bring that to you when we have that ready to come to you. And if there's an emergency, we can speak to them about it and make sure that there's not any delays on the agenda side.
Does the executive officer, separate apart from the salary piece of it, require this board's authorization? It would not normally, so we are acting as...
Yes, the hiring of the retirement administrator is done by the SCURS board.
Right, so...
It's the salary piece that we control or we have say on.
I know.
And if the board so desires, that was the compromise that we had in mind to hearing SCURS. We hear the urgency, we know that they want to attract the best person, and we thought this was the best solution.
Can we delegate the authority to streamline it? Does something within the range, to the upper range?
The chief executive or something?
Yeah, right, to the county executive. Is that something that's delegatable? Since it isn't, we don't have to approve the position itself, and we gave you up, gave the authority that they were asking up to, you would, you know, exercise your discretion. If you're comfortable with that, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that.
That streamlines, that streamlines it then, are you comfortable?
Could save a couple of weeks.
Good. Okay, cause then you still retain your control point.
Just don't go crazy.
I guess, you know, and you can, you know, I can always bring it back to us if you think it's not a particular problem, but I think that would maintain some more latitude as well as, obviously, the control point talked about here and certainly desire the SCURS board, so. Do we have a motion which would modify, I guess, then? Or why don't you restate it and understand that?
Okay, we establish a control point at the 50% tile, which is $230,400. And then if a candidate is selected above that control point, then do you delegate the authority to the county executive for the approval?
Up to the range, which is the 253695.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Okay, move in second then. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next items.
Those are all the items I had.
What about item 19 I asked you about?
The lease at Rockingham Drive?
So, as a board, we are undergoing right now a review of our real estate function, and one of the things that we are looking at is how we do leases, and this is one of the leases that we will be looking at. But I got Mike Morse here, he can give details behind the lease.
Yeah, I didn't, again, it's explained here, I get that, but there, you know, obviously, before we enter into leases, if we're reviewing them, once we enter into them, we're there, so.
It's more the practice that we're looking at what happened.
Well, yeah, but the practice, but the practice reflected on some of the, you know, the input that we got relative to whether it's market rate or anything else, and so I know the property. I mean, I remember when they remodeled it, I mean, you know, and I'm not, no opposition to parks going there, they remodeled it for the sheriff's substation at the time, but I just thought in light of some of the questions that were raised and whether I trust Mr. Morse as, with that, but if not, I, you know, I don't, wasn't gonna get into full-fledged discussion about that since you was under your...
No, I just want to make sure you knew that.
Yeah. Well, Mike, I don't know if you want to present, I mean, it's pretty self-evident here in the report, it's just that we're undergoing some review about how these transactions...
Yeah, Mike Morse, Department General Services, we did, as we do with all of our leases, we do market studies when we're looking at these. This actually probably comes in about 10 to 12% under market for that area, which would be around $1.30 or so, and we're getting this at $1.17. And that is full service, other than paying electrical, the lease includes gas, water, sewer, custodial, and maintenance. Also includes three free months of rent upfront, which is worth about $60,000. And it also includes all the tenant improvements that we'll require so we can move right in. So, actually, I think it's a, it's well-negotiated lease.
But the complaint that you received that came to me too is that the individual believes that the county didn't follow all the processes. I've talked to Mike about it, that's the information I got. The overall review we're doing as we're looking at it, feel comfortable with explanation that Mike's given, that this is below market in that area, but still, I don't want to minimize somebody brings a complaint.
Well, if it stands to the scrutiny, because again, I think it's, you know, again, we complain whether it's borne out to be legitimate or not, that, you know, that I think, again, it needs to be able to stand to the scrutiny, you know, cause we're all being asked to approve it, so we're taking that, you know, on good recommendation and faith, that all that has been adhered to, bringing it to us today. And again, I have no problem, it's a good location, and it had security for parking and lockers and all that because of the, you know, previous occupant there, although it's been vacant for quite some time. I don't know how many years it's been vacant, for quite a while now.
Yeah, it's been quite a while.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you, Mike. Any other consent items? I had one other one I wanted to ask about, we received some correspondence. Did you have any other ones? Back to item 10 on the dispute resolution.
Mr. Chair, I had item two.
Okay, Mr. Serna, sure.
Well, now, we can go, start in order from 10.
All right, yeah, so item 10. I read a recommendation, we had received a letter from the court, and it sounds to me like we're kind of doing double work here, that we went out to the marketplace, you know, part of it's embedded in the report is that, well, you only got two applicants, the court and the California Lawyers of the Arts, and I appreciate that protests have been resolved. There's still $100,000 on the table for services that could be made available. Now, we're gonna go out to another RFP, which inquires staff engagement going out. The court has offered to expand, I guess, their program to do that, assuming that we get the services required for the, you know, dollars that we put forth, cause what my attention really was is that, you know, it allows for the additional money to augment funding for programs receiving funding under the original RFP. Well, that's kind of like, well, we're gonna go out and test the marketplace again, but we got folks we're comfortable and confident with, we're gonna go through the process just in case, and if they don't show up, then we can give the money to these folks. And so, why do we run the courts through that when I see them more as a partner, a public partner than I do anything else? So, at any rate, just my question, Rip.
So, we crafted this proposal after consulting with county council on the most appropriate approach to take, and I think the concern is that we did go through an RFP process, and it's not clear what kind, we only got proposals from the two organizations, not clear what proposals we would have gotten from those organizations or others had we had a different amount that was capped for, had the cap amount been different. And so, that the most appropriate and fair thing to do was to award to the ones the amount that they're eligible for, to go through another RFP process. And the only reason we included the language regarding allowing use to augment the previous award is because we only did get two proposals, and it's potential we will only get two proposals, you know, or one proposal in the future, but we're not sure. So, we thought the most fair thing to do was, based on talking to county council, most appropriate thing to do is to go through a new RFP process, but provide some flexibility in the event that we do only get one more proposal.
So, what problem the county council have with all this? I don't, I still puzzled, I mean, you had more money available than you put it out for, that's a problem most people like to have. But now, we're gonna spend, I don't know how many thousands of dollars, going out to another RFP, we gotta resubmit proposals. And again, maybe that's the right thing to do, that's what's being recommended here, but I guess I just needed to have a little more affirmation as to why that makes a lot of sense.
I don't have that information at the top, I can check, my guess is belts and suspenders.
How much does it cost to go out to an RFP? From the county side, let alone the...
Not a lot of out-of-pocket costs, of course, the staff time cost in terms of reviewing it, but I don't know exactly how much that is.
That's all within the loaded rate that the county bills for, I mean, you know, it's all built into the budget that we just approved. Well, I guess I'd like to have a little more background, I don't know if this is urgent that we do this today, could, you know, is this something we can bring back to us on July 11th?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, then they'll just, they won't have contract for the following year.
Well, you can prove the contracts for the current ones, right? And then you can still make the...
So, you would award, you would award the contracts based on the, for the existing, the contracts that are being proposed, but delay the decision on whether to go through a new RFP process?
Is that or what, augment the existing contractors? Can you go do that?
Yeah, I think we can come back, I think if you approve the contracts as you have it, then part B of this will become if, do we augment the existing one, or do we have to do an RFP?
Correct.
And bring that back to you on the 11th.
Okay, just one other question then. So, with the courts, again, you know, we had this whole transfer of this responsibility to then went through all that, they've been a partner in this, they do the mediation right there in the courts and so forth. I don't know why it would be such a difficult if California, if the other bidder got what they proposed for, and they're gonna actually look at their programs, why is it a difficult decision to look to go to the courts? I mean, that's typically governments, comfortable with government, but...
So, I think what we need to explore more with county council is that that's, that's what we received and did not go down that line of questioning, it was an RFP, was, they were not treated as any different than any entity that comes in and bids on something. So, if the nature of the questions you have, I think we can go back, talk to them, if there's a governmental provision, I don't know, we can look at that.
Okay. So, if we take action on what, on making the awards today for this, that doesn't preclude anything that we could consider relative to this a few weeks out? All right. Okay, that's my questions. Okay, Mr. Serna, you had a question on the drive?
Yeah, item 60.
I did turn that to you.
16 or 60?
60. Zero.
60. Pride contract.
Item 60, adopt resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for debris removal at the American River Parkway with Pride Industries.
Okay, I know that there was a question asked about some more, requiring some more detail about this contract, but I'm struggling to find anywhere in the board letter or the agreement, how the Pride Industry employees are gonna be, if at all, be kept safe in a environment that, as per earlier conversation, is fairly dangerous.
Jeff Leatherman's coming down to answer that.
Whether it be loose dogs, hypodermic needles, assaults.
Jeff Leatherman, Director of Regional Parks. The intent of this contract is to augment our maintenance division as it relates to storm cleanup, as well as some illegal dumping and possibly illegal camping, but the primary intent is working in the harder-to-reach places outside of our illegal camping areas so that our maintenance team can focus on those areas, and this team would be in the areas not associated with legal camping, but more with our random piles of trash that are deposited in the parkway, where there aren't camps and dogs and those types of activities going on. If we need to adjust our maintenance staff and/or ranger staff to support any work that they're doing, we'll make that adjustment in the field on a day-to-day basis to protect them as we do with our own employees.
Do you know, Jeff, the structure that Pride has for supervision out in the field?
Yeah, in this case, they're looking at a one-to-three, one-to-four ratio of supervision to personnel.
And I assume the personnel are developmentally disabled individuals?
I don't know who they've identified to fulfill this contract at this point.
Okay. Has this ever been attempted before in the parkway with Pride in particular?
In my five years, this would be the first time that we have attempted this type of contract in our regional park system outside of some of our facilities. I'd have to double-check, but I do believe within our contract maintenance structure, we may have used Pride Industries for other activities.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm gonna be registering a no vote on item 60 because I am just absolutely not confident that these individuals are gonna be safe on the parkway.
Okay, all right. Very good. One other item, if you could call item 51. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Fratton, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to speak to that specific issue, and I am going to be supporting it. I'm very confident in Pride, have a lot of experience with Pride, among other things, my daughter's an employee of Pride, though she won't be on this contract, just for the record.
Careful, Patrick.
But they do a fantastic job of putting people in the right job and what, and with the right amount of supervision, there's, they are, many of their employees, not all, many of their employees are developmentally disabled, or their clients, but it's a wide array of developmental disabilities, so, you know, they put people where it's really appropriate. So, I feel, and I understand your concerns, and had I not had the intimate exposure to Pride that I've had, I would probably share them, but that's why I'm supporting this. appropriate. So I feel, and I understand your concerns, and had I not had the intimate exposure to Pride that I've had, I would probably share them, but that's why I'm supporting this.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And if I hadn't had the intimate experience getting stuck by a hypodermic needle, I'd probably think differently myself.
Okay. All right, Ms. Fratton.
But anybody can get stuck by a hypodermic needle.
That's true. Okay, Sue.
I just wanted to, I'm assuming that the Pride Industries covers their employees with an insurance binder, so they're covered if something happens. I'm assuming that's a requirement.
As with our contracts for a variety of services that we provide, we do have those insurance protections in this contract as well.
All right. Anything else on that item? Call item 51, please, very quickly.
Item 51, authorization to execute a revenue agreement with the city of Isleton for the provision of law enforcement services.
Okay. Nav, were you or Nancy involved in this negotiation, this contract at all? It has Nancy's signature on it. The reason I ask that, I think this needs to, again, working with City of Isleton, who, you know, this is more than half the city's annual revenues, and that's not our issue as much as it is theirs, but recognizing the limitations that if the city didn't exist, we provided those services down there, and it'll all be built into it. They continue to, you know, I think, struggle to make payments. That's evident here, and we get all the, we get all their cops' money. I would, I guess, ask that we stay engaged and involved because I, you know, I think I shared with you some of the chatter I heard around this before this got to the board that since went away. But, and it wasn't from the Isleton side, that, you know, they were concerned that they might not even have a contract for sheriff services. And sheriff has been very responsive down there. They had a town hall meeting, May 31st. People are very appreciative of the presence there and so forth. I just want to be sure, though, that we're realistic. Again, we have charges. We need to try to recover costs. We have a city that has very, very limited revenue and opportunities for revenue, and they passed a sales tax last year to support their fire department, which is a city-run fire department. And so, again, I just would ask that your offices be engaged in this. This is a three-year contract, but the sheriff negotiates these, but it's still in the auspices of, and I think in working, you know, with our civic partners, it's important that there be that level of engagement. Again, they have a new city manager, and again, a couple of new faces on city council, I think, are doing their best to stay afloat, and that's been a challenge, no doubt about it. And again, our office has assisted with transportation in the past and with some other things relative to emergency response. I know David Villanueva and his folks have worked with the city and appreciate that, and the fire districts down there. That's all been good. But this, I can see if this continues to go up, you know, at some point in time, it's going to equal the entire budget of the city of Isleton if we're not careful. So, and there are a few other functions down there that the city has to accommodate for. So if you could kind of keep a watchful eye, and maybe Nancy will be involved in it next time, but whoever, but our finance people as well, I just think it's important to kind of maintain that balance in the way we look at this. So, because the last point I would make is that if they always show being behind, then they never really get out of the hole. So if we negotiate a contract that's reasonable, certainly from our perspective, recovers costs, but also those are defrayed costs because in another scenario, we'd be burying it all within the general fund. So, okay. Thanks. Thanks for your help on Isleton stuff in the past.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all I had. Any other items on the consent calendar? Then if not, then we can entertain a motion.
I want to make a comment to the clerk. My understanding, is it item 57 and 5 were both on the recusal slide for me? And just to make the record clear, should I go ahead and recuse myself again? Would that be the easiest thing?
I'm sorry, item 50?
Seven and 5.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, what?
Yes, please recuse.
Okay, so how do I reflect that on my vote?
What is, do you have a motion on the ballot, on the?
I guess we do some, there's a motion, and she just repeats that I have already recused.
Let me do it that way.
Okay, let's do it that way. Okay. So do we have a motion? Is there anyone wanting to address the consent calendar? I know we're down to very few folks in the audience, but all right, because this is all, and again, thank you for bringing these in this sequence. I think it's important, and it reflects, obviously, attention to some detail. It's very important. So, all right. We have a motion? Okay. Chair would second it. Okay, it's moving seconded to approve the, I have consent items, it would be 5 through 63.
It would be 5 through 70 with the exception of items 5, 21, 57, with Peters recusing on 5 and 57, and then with the exception of 58, 59, and item 60 showing a no vote from Supervisor Serna.
Okay, that's the motion, and it's been seconded. Any questions? If not, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Anything else related to budget that we have to do today? We got, I cleared the off agenda item as well.
I'm sorry, guys, I blew it. You do have an off agenda that you need to vote for. And first, you need to determine the necessity to hear the item. This is a resolution commemorating the installation of the California Portuguese American Veterans Memorial at Capitol Park.
Okay. All right, move. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then I need a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, so move.
Set.
Unanimous vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Flo. Thanks for helping us through all that. So, all right. I do have an adjournment. Does anyone else have a adjournment?
Surprised you told me if I could just ask for a couple of minutes. I
Sure.
wanted to thank the board for the work on the budget we did today and yesterday. But I also want to take an opportunity that there's a lot of folks behind me that you typically don't see. Those are the faces that prepared the budget, worked with the departments. I want them to stand. That's our budget and debt management folks. I wanted to acknowledge for the hard work they've done, a lot of the long hours to bring this budget forward. And I just wanted to publicly thank them for the hard work they've done.
There's a lot more that aren't in the gallery.
That's what I was ready to say. And then there's a whole army of other departmental folks that do, that support them. So this was, I mentioned in the onset, it was truly a team effort, and everybody pitched in to present you the budget that we did today. And I can't thank them enough for the work that they've done on this.
I think that goes for all of us, all the work that you do. I mean, we had some discussion here, but when you consider all the items that came in front of us, it really, very few items of dispute. I think you do a great job every year on the budget. It's always explained to me in ways I can understand and go along with, and you respond if there's any questions. So I thank you all.
And I think the fact that it's always a multi-day effort, at least one full day, regardless of the economic conditions, it's at least that. Certainly, we saw during the depths of the recession, there were some really painful decisions that were made, and the team back then was doing yeoman's work as well. So I too want to express my thanks for giving us some clear direction. And I think it goes without saying, we always want options when we can have options up here. And I think this, this team goes out of their way to respect that request. So I too want to express my appreciation.
And thank you for making it easy for new people to understand. And thank you especially Nav and Britt for walking me through it and for all your help.
Well, I would echo that. Thanks for making it easy for guys with this 23rd budget. So it's always an adventure, but I would just say that certainly working with my colleagues up here over the years, and obviously having the privilege of serving as chair this year, I think the respect is shown by members of this board to one another, to our staff, even when passions run high as relates to things that we feel very strongly about and that our, our community as a whole, whether it be segments of that or certain individuals feel strongly about. We do our best to, I think, reflect that, obviously, in representing a million and a half people that constitute the population of Sacramento County, people of all ages, all walks of life, different views, different interests. And this budget in some way or another touches every one of those folks, either directly or indirectly. I think it's a real compliment certainly to the staff that bring us not only the documents and all the various things that have to be attended to, but I think the thought that goes into it, because again, embedded in all this action we just took here in this mountain of paper, are services that serve seniors and children and families in distress and folks in various business aspects, and certainly all the functionality of utilities and human services and things that, you know, run on the streets and fly in the air and underground, and just a tremendous amount of things that are embedded in here, and $4 billion that are public dollars, either tax and/or fees or some other revenue source. And so I express my thanks certainly to my four colleagues up here, certainly you, Nav, to folks all here in the room, and to many others of the, you know, 12,000 people that make up this workforce that actually make things happen as it relates to this, and all our partners in the community. We see a lot of partners. That's the other thing, is we have people that work with us, our nonprofits, our not-for-profits, and individuals that help make this community a good place to live. And I think what's here will continue to improve the quality of life, and we'll, you know, we'll continue to be back in these chambers on a regular basis to see how this plays out and things that are related to it. So thanks very much. Okay. Any else you want to add?
No.
Okay. Mr. Ferguson, anything? You got all the decimal points in the right place? Zeros on the right side of that?
Smiling for the first time in two days.
Okay. All right, with that then, and I was certainly, and by my colleagues, I wanted to time in, today we want to adjourn in memory of someone who was certainly known to folks here at the dais, and obviously worked very close with Flo and her staff and personnel that work on the second floor, but throughout the county family. Just a few days ago, we got the very unfortunate news that Kevin Romo, who had battled very courageously against cancer, a long, long battle, and I know that he was courageous in the sense that he was determined to continue to attend to his duties here at the county, working in the clerk's office, and he had worked in a couple of other areas of the county as well, but most recently, what, a dozen years in clerk's office?
Just about.
Yeah. He was, you know, determined to continue to work and to be productive and to contribute in his professional life, all the while that he battled cancer. And again, certainly there are others that did as well, but very personal, since we knew Kevin and appreciated him, he was a very gentle person, one who was very conscientious. I know that our offices certainly benefited, as did the people we serve, by his attention to detail and his work while he was here with the county of Sacramento. Also would note that his wife, Fay, had worked for the county for a number of years, actually worked in the clerk's office at one time, and she retired a few years ago, and they made their home here in Sacramento, in the Ranch Cordova area. And he was, you know, I think beloved by his family and friends, you know, a fairly quiet gentleman, but one who cared very deeply about his commitment to public service. And so knowing that, we want to express our sympathies certainly to the family. I know there's been announcement regarding the services. He leaves behind his wife, Fay, son, and granddaughter, and certainly many, many friends from the county family, but elsewhere in his neighborhood and the community where he lived and made his home. So with that, I would ask any of my colleagues if they wanted to make any further comments. And Flo, certainly you're welcome too, too. I know it's very emotional, but on the other hand, this is a time for us to pay tribute to one amongst us who is no longer amongst us in this life, but certainly contributed in many ways to the work we've done here for many, many years.
I just wanted to say that many don't know that Kevin's family had a personal relationship with my family, and his father-in-law had a very deep place for me. He helped my father through veteran services, so very special person. I've known his sister-in-law since I was 13 years old. They are a beautiful family. They're very close-knit. Kevin will be missed. Don't really know how to deal with these kinds of situations, so I won't say too much. I think that you really spoke very highly of him, and just from my heart, Kevin will be missed, and he was special. He was beloved by the planning commission. He refused to walk away from his duties to cover the planning commission. So we had worked around what he was battling with, and I admire him for that. He was available via text, email, and would come in and really was very, very passionate about staying active and working in the office and being in communication with everyone. And so I'm very saddened by this, and I thank you for adjourning in his memory.
Thanks, Flo. Anybody else? Ms. Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your words, Flo, and Dawn, about Kevin. I don't expect many outside of this room to understand that the way our offices are laid out on the second floor, it's a little odd because we have a diamond kind of cut out in the middle of a square. Not the most efficient floor plan, but during my time on the board, we were fortunate to have our, our offices, both when I was where Supervisor Frost is now and now in the corner, the northwest corner, have our offices fairly close to where Kevin worked. And so I know my staff all enjoyed kind of the close working proximity and some of the humorous relief that they enjoyed over the years, joking around with Kevin at times. He's, I agree with Flo, he took his job extremely seriously and was a very dedicated public servant in his own right. But, you know, we kind of jokingly called him the honorary, you know, District One, you know, fifth staff person on occasion. And when we heard the news, all of us in the District One office, when we heard the news of his passing, certainly were, you know, grief-stricken, along with the rest of his family, his friends, all of us up here on the board. And I will also miss him, and I think I can speak freely for my staff that they are going to sorely miss Kevin's presence as well.
Thanks for sharing. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just say where Kevin's office was, the first person you saw when you get off the elevator and the last one is, and he's always so cheery and nice, and good morning and good evening, and just a genuinely nice person, as is his wife. But I know he, and I was impressed very much with how long he was able to stay here with his illness, and that showed a lot of stamina and guts and interest in what's going on. So he's definitely going to be missed here.
Very well, very well said. So with that, today with our thoughts and prayers, certainly for the Romo family, and our expression of sympathies, we will adjourn this meeting in memory of Kevin Romo. And we'll be back in session tomorrow morning, or tomorrow afternoon.